I want to meet them all.
I hear you.
Are you guys ready to go? I have a seven o'clock. Like to call the March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three Town Rochester Planning Board meeting to order. Would please stand in pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance, which is why the United States of America, to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Okay, our first application is PB two zero two three dash thirty-seven, which is a lot line improvement for Francis and John Nodar are the applicants present today? Absolutely. Come on up. You could just state for the record your name, please. That's okay. And we're gonna do a quick roll call and then we'll get started. Our secretary is absent today. I'll do roll call. Zach Jarvis here, Rick Jones here. Mark Russell, myself is here, Patrick Williams. For the planning board, we have Dave Church, our planner, who is present, and Mr. Dave Gordon, who is our attorney for the planning.
Charlie, we could just want to note the members of the board that are not here.
Yeah, the members who are absent today are Maron Lindstrom, Zorian Pinsky, and our alternate Anne Marie Malone. Okay, we'll get started without further ado. So, thanks for joining us today. I realize the weather is that's okay. I realize the weather is a little questionable and we have some unusual difficulties tonight with some extenuating circumstances. So we're gonna work through the best that we possibly can. So if you don't mind, give us a sort of a brief, maybe a synopsis of what's going on.
So there's two parcels, a fifty-one acre parcel and eight and a half acre parcel, both owned by the same people, Jacqueline Francis Norers. And as you can see from the original survey map, the proposal is to move the lot line on the smaller parcel, basically so that the eight and a half parcel becomes five point two and the balance goes for the larger parcel.
So you're reducing the small parcel and adding that reduction to the larger parcel.
Correct. Basically one sort of line line adjustment.
Okay. And your surveyor is John Jones?
Okay, he's not coming on, not tonight? No.
Okay. Okay.
And I think it is stated in sort of the brief of the case, there was a, I guess, a subdivision of the large parcel within the existing bounds a couple of years ago.
Correct.
It was a revision.
Okay. So we're just adding adding some property from the small lot to the larger lot.
Right.
Okay, so this is the first time we've seen these maps. So let me give us a second. We're gonna speak over. Then we'll go around the room and see if anybody has any questions. Typically, these lot line improvements are fairly quick, so they don't require any any typical action. We're gonna just do a certification, which potentially could do tonight, depending on the board's review. Potentially be at our next meeting, but historically, this process is fairly good.
So basically, it looks like we're facing all wetlands and just monthly big problem. Or most of it?
Is that, I mean, yeah, essentially, it's enlarging the larger, you know, parcel with wetlands and additional land that increases the road access. Let's just size the wetlands. I think it's about point eight acres. It's approximate. The white ones are federally made of that. We even have to make this on final map because we'll we'll have the assessment. I don't I don't have the exact acres from from the federal regulation to the ground point eight acres.
Point eight or point eight?
Oh, point.
I'd like to ask the board just to refer to the computer here quickly. You'll see the small three point two five acres of the larger lot, of the small lot, being designated to the large lot in the back. So just a small.
Yeah, that 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 was, that's that's kind of a sketch.
Yep. Rick, does that make sense?
Yeah, just the map that we have on file, it's it's there's all sorts of other markings on it.
Yeah.
And I wonder whether it was the intention of the applicant. You take the markings that are here showing the fifty-one point nine, you know, getting the three point two five and then coming up with a final number for lot number, I guess it's lot number one, of fifty-five fifteen. So the map that we have on file has all sorts of additional markings. So we were using this one, and that's what we're approving, and that needs to be transferred on to here.
So the map that we have in the file is the previous conditional approval that Maron signed in September of twenty twenty on the web that I'm showing on the screen here.
So that's conditional. It was never certified?
It was a subdivision of previous lot, previous.
Well, no, the notations that are here on this one on what we have on the file, in the file, shows the large lot plus that portion of the other lot that's being allocated to the large lot to come up with a new number of fifty-five point one five.
Correct, but that map that we're discussing there is the map from the prior subdivision in twenty twenty. The paper map in front of you is the correct.
So this one never made it to the.
That's correct. Okay.
Any indication of the lot one is gonna be developed any further after the subdivision for lot line is up?
So not, to my knowledge, definitely not gonna be subdivided.
At least a road front for use lot then. Oh, I see.
The city hall.
I don't see anything else that's cut and dry.
I agree. I don't have any.
Okay. Land or if there's anything that they you know, doing a subdivision, you just blocking one.
Anybody have any other questions? Do we want to make a motion to?
Certify to give you the authority to certify the map as to the lot one proposed. Using this, the map that we have.
I'll second.
So all in favor? I opposed extensions. Okay. So you're all set. We have this certified as it tonight. What we'll do is the planning board secretary will reach back out to you sometime this week and advise you on what we need. We're gonna need some a couple of map copies and some MyLars and some various things will be details, fees that we have that are any outstanding, we'll get those wrapped up. And then once you have the map, I can come in and sign at a time that works best for us together, and you should be all set. All right. Well, thanks so much. The next agenda item is John Roth. I believe that John is absent today. He's not able to make it because they're traveling. I just wanted to confirm that his representative is not here. Okay, then we're gonna move on. The next item is a Harana Market. Thanks for coming. I know the weather.
Hello, I don't know if you can hear us, but even Chris from Harana Market are here. We're just on the Zoom call.
Hi, even Chris. We can hear you loud and.
Hi, everyone. Awesome. I'm gonna mute it when we're off, just so you don't hear background noise, but I'll jump in if if you know something comes up, okay?
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So currently, there's a couple of things that are that are outstanding that we need to discuss. One, thank you for all the items that you did submit. It's great work, and we appreciate that on the front end. A couple of items since the last time we met, which has been a long time ago, but that's okay. You have come to the code enforcement officer for application for commercial events. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have not received the determination from the code enforcement officer yet. We expect it to be sometime this week, but with weather and things like that, could be a little bit delayed. So we're expecting that anytime. So we will keep the commercial events conversation off the table tonight because we don't have that determination from the code enforcement officer, whether their, what their determination is. We have not had a chance to. So we will wait for that, but we can discuss all of the other items that you have submitted and potentially move forward depending on our conversation. Okay. So do you want to start with, we have a couple of things that went on since then. We have our new consultant, who has had the opportunity to review this initial application and made some comments, which we'll review tonight. And then additionally, you've supplied some items from the last meeting when we had conversation about some items that we were looking for as board members. We'd like to go over those. And then if you've received any interested parties, transportation, border health, anything like that, if you have any of those approvals or updates, we can discuss those. Okay, so I'll let you start and sort of advise us of what you provided.
Should we have updated maps from them and can we distribute the copies?
Can we have, do.
I apologize. I brought one copy.
What do you have there? Okay, so you submitted them digitally?
Yeah.
Okay, so we apologize if we did not advise that correctly. Historically, we would need five paper copies upon a new submittal. So for this time, we'll review them digitally, but just going forwards.
Yeah, we asked specifically, and they said no digital stuff.
Okay. We'll we'll work on that.
So when is it January one?
You said you have one copy?
Thirty-first.
Just give us a second. We're gonna pull it up here.
Basically, the only thing that changed was can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
We have a, we have a planner review one, and now we have another. Two separate finals.
That is, that is correct. We are focusing on the review from our latest planner. We've had some turnover and change with various members of the board. So our current planner is the one we'll be reviewing.
Okay, so some of the stuff that we put on the site plan was asked for the first plan.
That's okay, because probably a lot of those items came from our conversation.
It came from the conversation, but the second planner didn't ask for some of it.
Okay, that's probably because they were already on the review.
Okay, but anyway, so, so you know, we have the district, the district specifications, you know. One of the main things you guys asked for were the elevations on the property.
Yeah.
So we gave a couple of spot elevations, and the high watermark is negative twenty-two from basically ground zero.
Top of slope, they did on the, yeah, the high watermark and then everywhere.
Yeah. So, oh, sorry, yeah, high watermark is negative eighteen feet, extra water, negative twenty-two.
Top of slope is negative two, two foot five inches.
Yeah, from zero. And the other thing we we looked at the site plan, asked for your request is, we wanted to ask for a waiver on parking.
Yeah.
Or if we recalculate it to nine feet versus ten feet, which is hit for most places.
Right, so historically, that's the board would, we want a waiver in writing, depending on what your request is. Based on how many, how many spots you want and the size of them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We did that, but we also put on the site plan on nine foot spaces versus ten, and we came up with thirty-two.
So we'll talk about that in our conversation today.
You still have a lot of questions.
Sure.
And then just for familiarity, our first planner also is our engineer. Okay. So in the event that this would need to go to engineering, the planner, our first planner would have, that company still supplies the engineer and the rest of them. So there's a potential opportunity that you'd be dealing with that for your familiarity.
Okay, yeah, and beyond that, most of it is pretty straightforward. Just a couple of notes stating that we were gonna have, you know, basically four by four wire mesh fencing, and so it was a lot of notation, just the things that were brought up small, but the major things are grades and parking.
And no parking on the
No parking.
On the two oh nine signs.
Thank you.
Also, we removed the event barn that was on the property. It's not, it's not going to be there. Gonna fight it originally as an event barn.
Correct.
That's that. And we have a dumpster enclosure, snow push areas. We also have a sidewalk for safety from parking areas along you know, to the building. We got paved, paved sidewalks with a handicap parking.
Yeah, and other than that, it was just documentation on the site plan, you know, what's the zoning, what's the district, et cetera. And of course, we put on the planning board approval box. So we are, from our standpoint, we're hoping that the site plan is ready to go, as per your requests. And the other thing is just a list of, a list of items brought by the second planner.
Correct, which we can probably go right into this if you guys want. So our second planner is here, Mr. Church. He'll be representing us for this application, which will utilize his knowledge on some of these questions that we may have. So this is our first time of looking over this application, so we're gonna take a second to review this. As you, as you discussed here, number one, it's proposal and background summary. Item number two is documentation received. Three discusses any planning and zoning items. And then as we go through, four is his recommendations and conclusions. Okay. So, Mr. Church, we're gonna start on page number two with planning and zoning issues. How's that sound? The town planning board has final as documented by the local airport. Property of pre-existing non-compliments in R two district. The required CEO determination of the application was made by a memo on November twenty-second. The subject site does not appear, does appear to be within the protection overlay district. The entire lot is five point seven acres, estimated translated at approximately point eight five five acres for thirty-seven thousand four hundred square feet of site can be impermeable. Seeker application appears to be a type two action under seeker as per New York C R R six one seventy.
I was gonna say.
Well, let me start over. I apologize. I have them. I'm sorry. Thanks, Rick. Go back to page number two. Sorry. That's okay. So we're back to the beginning. Sorry, town planning board is approval authority. The required CEO determination of the application was made by a memo on May twenty-two. The subject site is within the flood plain development overlay district and must comply with the town flood damage protection law. The subject site is within the protection overlay district. I'm just going through these. Seeker application appears to be a type two action under seeker, given its redevelopment of existing buildings in sight. Public hearing, a public hearing is required in this application. Can we schedule county review for this continued application? The comment, the request was my quick review on completeness of this application and preliminary comments of documents submitted. Application completeness, just going through this. Okay, preliminary comments. Here we go. Number one, use town CEO has determined the applicant has met zoning requirements via May twenty, twenty, twenty-two. Proposed change of use appears to be a thoughtful reason for reuse of the existing facility in sight. Page number three. Short EAF part one of the short EAF has been provided as required. However, some answers need to be edited. Question one should be answered with no. Question two should be answered yes with the other permits as Ulster County Department of Health and New York State Department of Transportation listed. Question number ten and eleven are typically answered yes if connections are to the existing central supplies. Short explanation should be inserted that use will be will be to a existing private well and septic. Question thirteen, should I identify the roundout creek water body and flood hazard area and zero alternates alterations proposed? Have you guys, where are we with Ulster County Department?
They were currently, they said they were not, they're not looking to do the commercial kitchen right now because they they want to get planning board approval
Okay.
first before they go down the road of looking for a border health approval.
So you're saying that that would be in a future phase?
And and sorry, just to, just to jump in, we are in touch with Department of Health in terms of getting the septic and well numbers certified, and that's in process with our engineer. The thing that we were responding to there is the question of, do we need entire DOH approval before getting planning board approval? And that's where it's kind of chicken or egg, because we're not gonna build out the kitchen until we get planning board approval, and we can't get full DOH approval until we have a kitchen. So there's kind of two parts with Department of Health. The first is that our systems can support what we want to do, which is in progress. Conversations are being had, and we should hear back soon from Department of Health about that. And then the second part is actually getting the kitchen inspected and approved to open to the public. That can't happen until the kitchen is built out.
So historically, we would, when we have a phase by phase project, we would need to review everything in all phases on the front end of the application. So to answer the question, we need Department of Health approval now.
I get, but you can't.
Well. Okay. The kitchen is phase one, right? But we're not gonna invest the money to build the kitchen until we get approval from you guys that our concept is allowed. So phase one is the kitchen. We're not gonna open until next fall or this fall, but we are gonna build the kitchen basically the day we get approval from you. So it is phase one. It's just that we're not gonna build the kitchen until we get planning board approval, because if y'all decline it, we'll have to change our business model.
Oh, wait, wait, wait. When we sign off, when we give you approval, after we have the public hearing, then moves forward with the documentation, the findings, and the and the approval. When we're approving that part of it, we're gonna say you must have Department of Health before you get a CFO. That's gonna be part.
Correct, but there's months between that public hearing, and then we're gonna go build out the property, and then we'll have, get the the CFO and then the Department of Health approval, and then we'll open to the public. But that, those, that's like six months in between getting approval from you guys and then building out the property and then getting approval from Department of Health and building inspector that everything was built to code.
I feel, I feel like it's time to ask our attorney.
Yeah, so a typical thing we would do is, yeah, we can approve it.
Still, a lot of things we talk about, like the funding. But we can approve it, but it's contingent upon getting Department of Health.
Great, that was what we requested.
Hang on a second. Hang on a second. We finish. There's a lot of pieces to this. Department of Health is approving both water usage as well as the septic uses, and both of us were the same. What you take out goes back into the septic. In order to determine how much water you're gonna need and how much it's gonna do in the septic and whether we can handle it, we need to have a number of people. They're gonna ask, well, how many people are you gonna serve? You have those numbers, I believe, but I don't remember what they are. But the number of people is tied to things like occupancy around as well as how much seating is gonna be allowed, because the seating is constrained by the parking. You only have thirty-two parking spots. When I did some counting of of how many, how many seats you have and how many seats the people you have, inside, you've got forty seats. But we can do it a couple of different ways. One thousand eight hundred and forty-eight square feet equals thirty-six parking spots.
Yeah.
Okay, you've got forty spots for people sitting inside, in addition to whoever's standing around and watering. And you've got staff. That's not gonna count for from what I can see. And then you've got the eventual phase two, the commercial kitchen, where you said you have five people.
Phase one.
So that's five people. And then you have outside. Now, outside of the map that I saw, I don't know if it's the same one that one of you have in front of you. There's six tables. I don't know how many tables, how many people you're gonna have at the table. If you have four, that's another twenty-four people.
So Rick, I'm gonna ask, hang on just a second. Rick, I'm gonna ask our attorney to weigh in and see what, on a process level, when would we want that Ulster County Department of Health approval, or what, where does that step in our process of this application?
Yeah, typical application where there's not already a building, instead of making the CEO contingent on the county approval, you might make the building permit contingent on that.
Sure.
Here, they've already got the building, so you need on the CEO. I I guess, you know, this is all mostly done on paper, so I'm not sure why they they should, they should know how many people they're, they're applying for.
We do.
We do.
We do. We do. We've made, and those, those numbers are based on our engineers' numbers. We didn't just make those numbers up. The engineer that designed the system told us what the system can hold, and then they're the same people who are going to Department of Health to make sure that that system can hold those people. Parking is a separate conversation, which we can get into, but in terms of the infrastructure of the system, that was designed by the engineer and signed off on. You y'all have a letter there. That same letter has gone to the Department of Health, who are gonna sign off on the same numbers. So the number, the water usage, all of that is already decided and in a plan that would be built to that plan. We're asking for approval contingent that we build to that plan and keep with when what what everybody has agreed, which is based on Department of Health and our engineer.
So historically, again, when there's multiple phases, we would want all of this information on the front end for us to review.
That, that is, all of, all of the information is there. Phase one and phase two, everything is is included there. As of right now, we we can't build the phase two until we upgrade water and septic systems, so we, so we we don't have a phase two proposal because the phase two systems are not yet in place. So everything that we're, we're doing and that we know to do is included phase one and phase two in that, in that information.
So without, without interruption, we need to make sure we have this answered. This is very important to the application. What do you recommend we move forward with accordingly? Do you think we need to wait for Department of Health to make a determination, or do you think it's something that we can move forward on accordingly?
I think you move forward contingent on Department of Health.
Approval.
Approval.
It's not because part of our approval that maybe Department of Health before building.
Correct. Subdivision will get preliminary approval. I'm not sure. Customs to do that, the site plan approval as well, but in the subdivision context, preliminary approval will otherwise, you could just be contingent on that, made a condition.
So then are you guys, would you guys be satisfied with a Ulster County Department of Health approval at the time you take building permit application?
Well, there's one, one problem. Well, you have the approval for what the engineer is going for in terms of the waste.
Sure, and the engineer on record is? Mettenbacher?
The only thing they wouldn't be able to have, can't get, can't build the kitchen, get a board of health approval on the kitchen build out unless you have a building permit before then, you know, because you can't build a kitchen without a building. So that would be the only other part that's needed to be approved after.
So Patrick?
I knew you had a comment. Yeah, I'm trying to just go back and see there, what's the outside seating? What's the number of the outside seating? I have, I have to get back to.
We have four people per table. That's six tables, twenty-four. The twenty-four outside.
So documentation would.
No, we're grabbing this up.
Remember the number ten somewhere as well. Yeah.
So it's twenty-four outside.
Could be on our next.
Four years side.
Yeah, I think actually.
Okay, yeah, not like me more than.
Or that's the original. Yeah, it's not to exceed a hundred, which is what the whole system is designed for. Which we provided that documentation.
Okay, so you want to move on on that topic and see if it comes up in another area? Well, well.
So I guess we'll be just starting on approval when we get to that point.
Right, but there's, well, there's a couple of things.
Be contingent upon.
Yeah. The difference here is that.
They need the building permit.
Exactly. That's the difference. In a subdivision context, they don't need the building permit in order to get approval for septic, right? So you, that comes with the tail end. Here, assuming what they're saying is correct, and I don't have any independent knowledge of it, they need the building permit before they can go to the health department. And so assuming that what they're saying is correct, it would be improvement of us to require the build, to to not give them, to not give them the building permit until they get the health department approval, because then we're just setting up chickens and eggs that don't.
So you, you recommend that we would get the. So you, you recommend that we would get the, we would need the building permit obviously first. So would you recommend, uh, Mr. Gordon, that we would ask for the Department of Health approval at the time that the CEO was?
Before.
Before.
You know, it's the analog of a subdivision that instead of making building permit contingent on getting health approval, might going to make the CEO. But I have, I, I, I'm going to, I want to check the code and make sure that it's kosher. But, um, the logic of it is. Is pretty.
Okay. So.
I think that's.
We'll move on while he's talking about that then?
Come back to it?
Yeah. Okay.
Dave, you know off the top of your head, whether that's kosher or non-korzy, the health.
Yeah, I think what you're talking about is fine. I, I, I think it shouldn't do it. You praise the code, shut the camp. Then you have to have a fight with the health department out there having the situation.
So we'll come back to that as we have information. Let's talk about parking. So the applicant is requesting the waiver of parking stall size required as well as recalculation of parking capacity required. The planning board need to discuss this and decide on this waiver. Note, should be made that the applicant has documented availability of shared parking from neighbor. However, such shared parking raises issues pedestrian safety along the access road through two oh nine. So I don't want to talk about the shared parking because that is only relevant to your commercial events. So I want to, that's a totally different topic that we don't have determination from the code enforcement office. So we're going to keep that separate this month. But we can talk about the waiver and what your request is for parking in the size. So I'll let you guys sort of pitch what you want to do for parking in.
Well, just because the increase in, uh, the number of spaces. I don't know, uh, retail amount we have.
Thirty-six. I remember.
Well, we have thirty-two now.
Yeah.
So when we still were ten feet wide, we were, um, at thirty, we lost, we lost.
Okay. So I don't see, and I'll sort of go over my notes that I have on parking. I don't see employee parking designed and outlined on the map. Have you guys, I know you said you thought about it. That's included in the total?
And our new, our new, it's been submitted digitally, our new.
Well, hang on. We have the digital version right here.
That's just.
Okay.
You have lots of documents.
So you can get pedestrians closer to the building.
So what we did in this parking waiver, that would be on the digital document. What did you do is that we excluded the storage areas from the square footage. Parking was determined by total square footage. But the total square footage of the building is not usable by. It's a lot of its storage and.
Diagram on our floor plan that outlined exactly the usage based on, uh, zoning and also the, uh, building.
So I see you're.
To exempt the storage spaces. And the nonusable space hallways, et cetera. Places that don't include seating or serviceable area.
Sure.
From the square footage for the parking. So when you exclude those things, you're well within a reasonable parking. So if you include.
You keep referring to digital. You don't know it off the top.
You don't know it two months ago.
No, he submitted.
Listen, hey, we won't have the back and forth. That's not. We asked a question.
You don't hold it off the top of our head as we don't because we have hundreds of documents.
That's fine. So I'm reading this right here and it says, see site plan for total parking space provided of thirty-two with the reduced parking space proposed. The proposed quantity of the parking space required is twenty-seven is defined in more parking calculation on January thirtieth of this year.
Right. If you exclude.
Find the nonusable area.
What are we allowed to ex, to make exceptions on? The code says square footage.
Your ability.
Okay.
Your, your capacity of the way.
Right. Which we do have their way. We asked that at the last.
Then we'd be tempted to get some.
I think your calculations are there, right there.
Okay. So I'll read this.
Modify any standard.
Yeah.
Okay. So the proposed seating area classified as restaurant for your basic park requirements zoning chart in section one forty, yeah, seventeen. Seventeen, which consists of three hundred and sixty square feet of indoor seating area and approximately two hundred and forty square feet of exterior seating area. This equates to a total of six hundred square feet of restaurant space, which would require one parking space per fifty square feet resulting in twelve required parking. The remainder of the main market building will be classified as commercial space per the same zoning chart referenced above and consists sixteen hundred and twenty-one square feet. The adjacent building on the property will be solely dedicated to a commercial kitchen, which consists of a thousand twenty-seven square feet and will be classified as commercial space as well. This equates to a total of twenty-six hundred and forty-eight square feet of commercial space, which require one parking space per a hundred and seventy-five square feet resulting in fifteen required spots. Per the town of Rochester zoning parking requirements in section one forty dash seventeen, a total of twenty-seven parking spaces minimum would be required for both buildings and their intended use. The next portion talks about event parking, which we've discussed that we're going to table that for another conversation. So board, does that, uh, does that help us with your calculations? Board members?
So our minimum code requirement twenty-seven and they have.
Thirty-two at the reduced size. So now is the twenty-seven allotted in that allotment included in importance?
Yeah. Cause it's based on total.
Okay. Okay. So you're proposing a total of thirty-two at the minimum at the reduced size?
Yes.
Board members, any questions?
And that also includes the outside.
That includes the outside. So it's a total of six hundred totally usable space, including exterior and interior.
And, and without line, that's, that's not a floor plan.
Dave, anything, uh, I don't want to, I know that in your review, you were, uh, mentioned that we need to discuss the waiver, but other, the other item you had has to do with our future conversation. So any other topic on that?
Yeah, fair enough. No, it's just, there's the only eight use, land uses, the parking standards for broad uses. They they're picking two restaurant, they have to agree that portion of the use is restaurant and the others portions commercial. Different standards.
Sure.
That would have to be part of your decision.
Right. So we would.
You're okay with. The, the only thing I guess, and, and don't get me wrong. My goal here was to get you to the point where we can schedule a public hearing and keep moving. But I'm a little confused by you want to bifurcate the two phases in some aspects. But on the parking, you're ready to calculate the whole. So I think you're going to, I think you're going to make a.
Phases is the wrong word.
Right.
Faces is, it's all going to happen at once. Like you said, building out the kitchen is going to happen as soon as we have approval. So it's, it's in the hall of sight where it needs to go and as soon as you have approval. So it really shouldn't be using the word phase. It's just the fact that the market will be open. You know, we'd like, they'd like to see a value of the apartment while they're still building.
It's right.
If you can getting a C, uh.
They want to get their business going while they're.
There has to, there's no. So let me. But look for approval on every. You don't want to use the eight one thousand eight hundred and forty square feet from the building.
From the kitchen.
You want to use, you want to get rid of the storage space and all that from that building. And that's what you put in this memo.
That's what the, yeah, that's a kitchen. That's helping rationalize the request for the waiver.
Right. Yes.
Which I think, to, to that point, I think they've provided the documentation. Consider a waiver.
Sure.
So then the question becomes, is it a restaurant or is it commercial space? I think those standards are different.
I'm correct. I'm just stating you're part of your decision is you're agreeing that it's.
That their calculation.
Different use. Because, because in certain standards.
We would not, if they decided to change their mind after they just, they moved forward from here and said, we want to make this one big market. That now changes things because the, the standard would be for the commercial kitchen is a different standard for the market. So the approval would be that the commercial mark, the commercial kitchen in the back exists.
The commercial kitchen in the back.
I'm, I'm not worried about because that commercial kitchen that identifies only going to be five feet.
Correct. Yeah.
What I'm worried about is the main building of one thousand eight hundred and forty square feet.
Yeah.
A portion of that, when I counted, there's a portion of that, I think it was three hundred and sixty square feet has the tables in it.
Yep, that's correct.
That's what I would consider.
So Rick, so.
So you may have it six hundred.
No, no, hang on. Three hundred and sixty is indoor and two forty is exterior. So all seating combined is six hundred.
So you want to apply the fifty, the one spot for fifty square feet to the six hundred.
Yeah. Where the seating is. That's right.
Okay. So that's, that's thirty spots. Right? No.
No.
Fifty, that's six hundred.
So I have a question on that same topic because Rick is about the commercial kitchen. In the event the Department of Health denies the request for the commercial kitchen due to septic, water, whatever they deem concerns, what would that space be then utilized? Has that been thought of?
Well, okay. So there's two, yeah, there's two, just to clarify, we're, we're, we're saying commercial kitchen. The, the, the market restaurant part is what we're really pursuing. There is, there is a kitchen in there and that's where our fast casual is going to operate. Operate out of. If that, if the commercial kitchen deaths, gets declined, we would just shift more into the market aspect of our business. Obviously we'd have to come up with like strategic numbers, like how we could make the money on our business. Food is obviously a part of the current business model. So if that gets removed, which truthfully, there's no reason to think there is, the building was built as a commercial food service and Department of Health. The same guy who approved it is the same guy we're working with. So we're really talking in like, I, like point zero one percent chance. We haven't really built out a business plan for a plan B, but we would, we would pivot. We would amplify the market space and probably have to, you know, do some other business model, truthfully, but we would figure that, figure that out. We own the building, so we're going to do something out of it if, if that's closed.
I guess the reason I ask that is because in the event the commercial kitchen, let's call it the commercial kitchen, gets denied, which regardless of the percentage of chance, if it were to get denied. On, on this site plan, you would not be able to utilize additional market space because that's at a different parking value.
I think if, if it gets denied, we're going to have to go back, come up with a new business plan and come back and start this process with you, which will include parking. Um, but it will also include whatever our new business plan is. I mean, we're going to have to come up with a new thing and then, and then start over basically. And in which we will re-review the parking based on whatever that thing we decide to do is, you know?
So I think that's just the, the topic of conversation.
Building was already calculated and twenty-seven as commercial space.
So I guess my, what I'm getting at is in the event that the commercial kitchen doesn't go and you say, okay, well, we can't have a commercial kitchen. I'm going to expand the market into that space and just make it one large market. That's going to change your parking ratio.
Sure. Yeah. Yeah. It's a different equation.
It would only change.
Right.
With all due respect, your classification for business.
Correct. That's correct.
And hopefully you guys update them because a lot of businesses are going to change. So we're kind of pigeonholing to these eight classifications, which are dated, to be honest. And it's a little tricky to try to put a modern business into a dated model.
That's what we're working.
We don't, we don't get to choose that. Right.
Can it be considered for some scope?
Okay.
I came up, I see where you got the twelve required space based upon the three hundred and sixty and five hundred and two hundred and forty outside. That's as well. The remaining space in the main, one hole in the main building, you're considering to be commercial space.
Yes.
Yeah.
And then all the commercial space in the second building.
Yeah, we have dry storage. We have hallways. We have walking. Yeah. Okay. Yeah.
And that.
Total of that can't be used by the public.
Then applies the standard of one hundred and seventy-five.
And that comes to a number of fifteen. Yeah.
So that's what they should have fifty.
Yeah.
Okay. And that's what you've got the twenty-seven.
Yes.
Okay. So you still need the exception to the size of the parking.
Well, that's up to you guys because we, you have to determine based on our calculations.
It's nice to have more than less.
I'm okay with your twenty-seven.
I'd be okay with even meeting somewhere in the middle.
Stilting or stuttering.
I wish we had the info shared together, but it's okay.
But the, um, it, it may be a problem. This is known for land of trucks.
Oh, yeah.
Nine, nine by ten may not do it. I don't care.
Is it, is it possible to have compact spat, like meet somewhere in the middle and have compact spots?
I'm getting there. I know you're anxious, but let the board finish. I wouldn't go for eight by ten. I don't know. But nine by, or this is a, nine by ten is okay. Just realize you've got issue with trucks.
Yeah.
People also have contacts. So nine by ten for me is okay. I don't know what the rest of the board thinks.
I think it's fine.
I can agree with that.
So, uh.
So nine by ten, you need twenty-seven, nine by ten gives you thirty-six.
Nine by ten, thirty-six, thirty-two. Which required.
Our attorney has some input.
Yeah, I have a question which applies both to parking and air, but it applies to secret, um, classification. I understand from the conversation with the chair, that you guys are reviving the application for, um.
Commercial events.
For commercial events. And so my question is, number one, does that in any way affect the parking? And in particular, does it? Is it cumulative? So we've got to deal with that.
Right. So I'd like to, I'd like to cover the commercial events topic on a thirty thousand view. So keep in mind the commercial event request.
Yeah.
In the event the code enforcement officer says this is fine, whatever the case may be, could be a long process. And the reason I say that is because in the event you want to use off-site parking, which you've requested, that would require a contract with that business owner and that land. That in the event that building sells, it would have to assume that that person would assume that contract. Number one. Number two, shuttling of people, there's potentially a safety concern there, just talking high level. Number three, our engineer is going to need to get involved. Department of Transportation would now need to get involved. So this changes your application, not only on, uh, on a level of where we're at and how far we've already come. But it could really alter the design of the overall project, which could, I'm not, not preempting things, but this could be a three, four, five, one, one. I don't, I don't know, depending on how long those things take. So I just want the applicant, Eva, Chris, and obviously you guys to, to think about that because depending on what the determination is and how it goes, the timing could have just expanded. Like as Mr. Church mentioned in the beginning of the meeting today, we were potentially ready to set a public hearing and maybe even do a, a secret classification. As these things change and we wait for the code enforcement officer, we might not be able to get that far again. So I just want you to sort of be preemptive. Patrick, I might have missed something.
No, just I wanted to, I wanted to slide in on the.
Thank you.
Tell over you.
Okay.
Depending on, cause also that's going, if you're going to run a shuttle service, you're going to need room for the shuttle service in that parking spot that you already have basically all.
I know.
Correct.
That would be, uh, that would be organized.
Yeah. Just to say.
I thought that would be. If there's a car parked in all thirty-two of them spots, you're going to run a bus into there.
There's a.
So, yeah. And these are, and Hunter makes a good point. These are all topics of conversation that now our engineer is going to need to get involved.
Sure. So just to jump in, just to jump in on our philosophy of moving forward, which I think is the thing we need to discuss here. We certainly don't want our project to halt in this commercial events thing. To, to clarify, these are like, what we're asking for is up to six events a year that are like a, a wedding or, uh, you know, I don't know. Uh, we don't even know what they are yet, but thi- this isn't the primary part of our business model. So we have no problem pursuing that conversation separately as we move forward, the primary part of our business, which is a, you know, fast casual takeout restaurant and market space and, and the things that come there, which are indoor seating and food service. So, you know, for us, those, the shuttle, that, that's not like our regular part of business is like the lot's going to full and all of a sudden we're doing a shuttle. Those are for these like up to six events a year that if we choose to do, and that, and that can again be pursued separately. So I'm happy to get into where the guy turns around, which is the answer is the loading zone. I mean, we, we have all these things considered, but we don't need to get into them now. I think we just need, let's focus on taking what we originally proposed to, you know, public hearing and the county and all of those next steps while also.
So Eva, I'll, I'll cut you off there.
Sure.
Just wrap this. So what the commercial events application, I want you to be informed that in the event we were to receive this application prior to when we did, you wouldn't have even been on the agenda for tonight because this would have stopped the whole entire process because now we would have needed more information. So because this information was submitted to us after the agenda was already on, I allowed this application to go through so that we can, in hopes, move forward. I don't want to talk about commercial events because I don't have a determination. In the event the code enforcement officer says yay. In the event the code enforcement officer says yay, we're gonna go down this road. In the event they say no, we're gonna go down this road. Um, but keep in mind that because you've taken an application for a commercial event. We're gonna have a very difficult time in going through and approving this waiver for parking, because now that changes things. Approving the Department of Health, uh, timeframe, although that, that's something that we need on the front end, that could alter things. Because now the Department of Health could say you need a larger, uh, tank than that is existing because you're gonna have more people. So I don't, I don't want to go down that road yet because I don't have a determination. So I'm gonna push forward.
Yeah, we provided that info, so we look at it internally.
And again, I can't do that until I have a determination, so.
And just to clarify, the, the.
Hang on, Eva, just, hang on.
That's all I used to say, but I don't even want to set a public hearing, unless we got the understanding correct. That, I'm not even sure we're at the public hearing.
Right.
Without the commercial events. I don't want to set a public hearing, first, they intend to go for a commercial hearing. That's a different seeker.
Yep, absolutely.
We can't do.
Right, we wouldn't be able to classify, it's a public here, we don't have ability to envision.
So we're dead in the water.
Right, so I want to.
The assumption.
Sure.
The assumption that the board, and we're missing, what, two members, three members? Is gonna be okay with commercial events.
Sure.
Um, I mean, how are you gonna handle septic?
Yes.
So all that we've, we've addressed.
Eva, hang on, this, this is our time to go, we'll, we'll let you know.
The way that this works, if you don't mind, having been the chair before, is the applicant gets the list and not interrupt. Because it's important for the board to discuss what we need to discuss and to tell you where you're at. You know, where you're at is, there's no way I'm gonna vote yes on a public hearing. You can't do C.
We don't, we don't need the back, we don't need the back and forth. Go ahead and keep, continue with your point, we're, we're in.
The septic system, person can handle these commercial events. You put a separate water plant, whatever on it. From our experience with that on the project. Not even a special event, but just regular events, uh, through the nature of the business. That extra water plant, the board of health is requiring to have potable water. So you're gonna have to run a water line there, but and I'll defer again to our attorney. I don't see how I hear that we're gonna, there's gonna be a request that we set a public hearing.
Right.
I don't see how we do that.
Understood.
We can't predict.
I mean, I, I want to continue going through these line items because we do have some information that's unprovided. And like I said, the commercial events thing. I wanted to preempt the conversation tonight, so you guys understand that the timing, the cost, the additional review, um, that could come of this, you need to be prepared for that, okay? So regardless of what you provided.
Just the director.
Sure.
All of that information on those events that you drafted, like.
Of course.
Please provide, we submitted two months.
No, but we can't review those items because we don't have a determination from the code enforcement.
Right, I understand that.
We don't, we haven't even looked at that.
Okay, but it's submitted two months.
And we don't have any access to looking at it because it's not in our file.
Yeah.
So I understand where you're coming from, saying you've already provided, we just, it's not that hard.
No worries.
Just for clarity.
Sure.
Or I mean, we're here and applicants will. Cause you're gonna have to go to the, um, the building inspector if you're gonna do a commercial.
Yeah, I think I remember.
That was back in January, December, when I was working in January. So I'm glad you gave us the info, but nobody, I don't know when you went to the building inspector.
Right, they, they just went this week.
Okay, got it.
Okay, Mr. Church, sorry.
No, just for clarity, you're, you're seeking, you, they're seeking the code enforcement officers, uh, deter, determination on a commercial events facility?
Well, it's interesting, I'm not sure.
There's only, that's the only use allowed in there.
Right.
In the, in the code.
That was something.
I'm just asking.
No, it's.
Well.
Why is you're seeking what a mask gathering permit for?
No, it would still be used as the same use and the occupancy would still be limited to a hundred. It just would be a special event, meaning the business is closed for the same use, just special. Meaning like reserved for.
Yeah, I like Mr. Gordon away.
I'm not sure exactly how you would create it or what the basis is.
Yeah.
But I can tell you, and I'm looking right now at the code.
Yeah.
For this district, one of the listed special uses, which I assume is the one that applies to what we're talking about. Assume you want to do these events, is something called commercial events facility. That's a special use. That means, as I understand this, if you want to get that done, you're going to apply for a special use permit for a com. In my mind, that's, and that, that's gonna do a couple of things here. First of all, it may, may not add to things like specific things like parking or anything else. Secondly, that is an unlisted action, so it will convert what we do in under secret, something will be done, it actually do. Those are the two things in my mind, and I'm sure the smart people can figure out a lot more things that they have, but the point is, to answer the other, the lady's question. At least under seeker, and I'm quite convinced under, uh, general planning. Once you have a specific plan, the way things work is if, if this was a something you were gonna do in the future, maybe once you got capitalized, et cetera. There's no plan to do it, then we don't need to do them all at once. Sometimes you, you will do the phases at once where there's a concrete plan. If you're already applying for it, that tells me that there's a definite plan to do it, no matter how many times a year, I don't know what it is, but there's a plan. If there's a plan, that means it's gonna gather everything on the same secret. So we're gonna, the point then would be to bring it to the table here, where we've got a plan with all the numbers, how many event, because on the days of the events, it's gonna be a bigger, bigger deal. If you are gonna shut down the rest of the commercial facility, then we know that, we could, we get the smart people to crunch it all, and then we have the answer. That's, we need to know, what, if you had said, we're not doing this now, that's one thing. If you say we're, we're doing it now, that the building inspector hasn't figured it out, that's something else.
We were asked to present anything you do either now or.
Sure, and, and like I said.
That's what we did, we tried to do as transparent as possible.
And you guys have really done a good job. I really, your application, the documentation you provided is really good. We appreciate that.
Yeah.
It's just this conversation, we were prepared to get to where we thought we could get to, and then we saw. Hang on a second, this is what we have. So everything has sort of been held. So I don't wanna, you know, I want to make sure that you guys understand. I mean, we can keep discussing all of these items, but a lot of these are going to change. I don't want to waste anybody's time.
Yeah.
Um, so, you know, regardless of, as, as Mr. Church recommended in line item number five, a line item number four, pedestrian movement. That's something that might need to be discussed more once we have the determination. Number five, New York State Department of Work, uh, Department of Transportation work permit, based on the January twenty-six memo from John Riley. Work will need to be done to address the existing access to Route two oh nine. Again, that still might change again with commercial, uh, events. Ulster County Department of Health, I think, yes, sir.
Your additional documentation states you're gonna put no parking signs up along.
We were asked to do that.
Yes, right.
Do that.
Well, you can't, well, DOT is the only entity that can do that.
Well, not on our property. We can put it on our property.
Well, you could need to figure out where the right of way is.
We already have that on the site. So it's gonna be. For sake.
I'm gonna defer, but I'm not sure you can put a no parking sign up anywhere near.
Official DOT sign, it won't be on a metal post.
It'll be on what you are. We did ask for that.
Yeah, which I think is, okay, I totally see your point.
Two, two points. One is DOT often still wants.
Their sign.
The sign, of course.
Um.
Because you can't just put signs up on the, on, on your right of way.
No popping in the road.
The traffic. Having, I dealt for many years trying to get the Shongam mine trail signs up in a previous job. It took, it was a nightmare.
Okay, so again, that's another question that we need to ask John Riley too.
Two, there's the effectiveness of such signs.
Sure.
By many, right, landscapes covered with, on a typical town road or county.
Places where these are.
Where we've done that elsewhere is sort of our.
And being amenable, the client's willing to do that.
Yeah.
And if the DOT ever came by and said, you have to remove them, I'm sure that you have.
Yes, I mean, what, John Riley is somebody who we deal with a lot from the Department of Transportation. We have no problem reaching out to him and asking what he records, requests, so we'll do that.
Yeah.
Um, Department of Health, we talked about, round out a creek and flood hazard, you mentioned that in your plan with your elevations, thank you. Again, special events, so as of right now, um, we're sort of in a holding pattern. If you're a Disney fan, you're sort of in a holding pattern on the Little Monroe. So, um, I think what we want to do right now is let's wait for the determination from the code enforcement officer. Once we get that determination, then we can understand what you have provided, advise you on what else we need, and then we can hopefully get to a level where we.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
If the client decides to ditch the events altogether.
Good question.
Where do we stand right?
Um, we stand tonight where we would need to, um, review more in detail the site plan to make sure that we have everything and the application is one hundred percent. Then potentially how the board feels, we would be able to discuss the waiver for parking, whether we want to approve the waiver or continue to discuss about it. Um, we have the employee parking talked about, the, um, just going through my problems, we talked about Department of Health. Uh, potentially, we would need to get the engineer involved for turning, turning large trucks around, depending on how they, how that uh, conversation looks. We saw your plan, but we're not, uh, large vehicle turnarounder people. So we might need the engineering involved, depending on what the board feels. Um, and then potentially what other board members have that we have not talked about yet, because we have not got that far. So to answer your question, I'm sure that you're looking for a seat classification and a planning.
Just curious.
Sure, okay.
Outside.
I mean.
I feel like we're, we're getting, we're going in the right direction and we probably have, um, maybe seventy-five to eighty percent. Does that sound about accurate?
So, uh, just jumping in here, understanding the, the, like, what adding commercial events to this process looks like and the little amount of cur, commercial events we plan to do and the little amount of what that part of our business model is, we're really leaning towards, Chris and I, just continuing to move this thing forward. There was one point where someone suggested we could do permit by permit application. I mean, we're talking at least a year from now. While, before we're doing one of these events and truthfully, we can't that, we're hesitant to hold this entire process up for, for that and add possibly months to it. Um, so I don't know where that leaves us today, but for, for us, that's just, we just want to share that.
Okay, so what I think we should do today, and there's other board members that still want to talk about this project, and we'll do that for a couple of minutes, is I'd like to wait till we get the code enforcement officer's determination. Once we receive the determination, we're gonna send it to you guys, and then you can advise us on how to proceed. Keep in mind, you have already taken application, paid your fees to, for them to do a determination. Hypothetically, anything commercial events is off the table because we don't have that. So we are in holding on that topic. In the event you like what the code enforcement officer has to say or do not. Then you guys can come back to us and say, we would like to move forward accordingly, or we're gonna go back to the original route and what we have to do to get this cleaned up. So Patrick, I'll.
You want my opinion?
Yeah.
If I were a business person and there, see, I'd say screw the commercial events and move forward. There's still a few things. Of course, there's no, there's no.
Right, but we don't, we don't want.
Board going, you stay on your head, that they would approve the commercial events.
Not only that, we can come back in a year.
And you could, and we don't, we don't want to be in the business of giving our opinion on what, you know, this is your business and how you guys want to operate, we're just here to review.
They ask the reality, the reality, that's what I would do.
Understand.
There's still some items here that, that I want to go through.
Yeah, of course.
So getting about commercial.
Can I step on you for a moment?
Yeah.
Eva, if you can hear me. Hey Eva, can you hear, uh, the board member?
Oops, sorry, I was muted. Yes, hi.
Just, just for, just for your information, even one event changes all the documentation we have to go through. It doesn't make any difference if you're planning on a dozen of them, six of them. Just the concept of one of them implements all of the changes.
Absolutely, that's, and that's a good point, because how you guys sleep tonight and make your decisions based on that, you need to know that one commercial event affects the entire application. So if you guys want to come back in front of us in a year and say, hey, we've gotten to this stage in our, our, our business, we're happy where we're at, or we're not happy where we're at, we want to adjust things. We can have that conversation at that time, but keep in mind, the code enforcement officer has to make that determination first. And then from there, we can, uh, you guys can decide how we should, uh, proceed.
Okay.
Okay, so I think Rick, Zach, Patrick, I think that's pretty good for tonight on this topic.
One or two other comments that might be helpful.
Okay, sure.
Um, the landscaping is fine.
Okay, good.
Proposed for landscaping, I hope you realize those tomato grasses are gonna grow to eight feet, so if they don't want them eight feet, I'll give you some, some stuff that's only six feet or five feet or four feet.
Absolutely, yeah.
Take, take the advice.
It's, um, but I'll give you a floor and tell you.
Oh, really? You can respond, uh, to our.
I'll send you the names of what.
Yeah, okay. Rick's, Rick's landscaping expertise is unbelievable.
The signage, when I went through the signage code and went through the flows, and some of the signs were too wide. Um, the parking lot signs, you had a seven clear, I think it's normally five feet. So I just wanted to look at the code again and maybe even talk to David.
Yeah. That was the standard of the code in itself.
Yeah, well, they didn't look at a code.
Right.
Cause the heights is shown in the map.
Yeah, nice.
And the biggest one is, and I think, I think it's okay, but you gotta look at it on code. The sign you're gonna have up there that says Verona.
Yeah.
Right. You gotta make sure the code says you only do sixty-four square feet or ten percent of the available space.
We did read that.
You did read that, whichever is less.
Yeah.
Kind of make sure that's correct, but the other signs seem to be off.
We could send section of the code to the timely sign.
And to make sure.
Yeah, these are things that are, are checklist items that we want you to get clarified now so that we don't have to hold it up there.
Yeah.
Well, you'll go on the map, we'll make it easier.
Yeah.
Be able to see what the, except for the hearing.
Yeah.
On the lighting, Chair, I think we should send the lighting as a matter of policy, all the lighting needs to go to our engineer, just to say, yeah, it's fine.
Yeah.
I thought that was happening after the last meeting.
I didn't have.
Okay, we'll, we'll do that. So we will engage our, uh, planning board, uh, engineer, CPL. They'll be in communication with you and they'll review the lighting.
So, and what we've been asking, uh, people on two oh nine, for the most part, is every hour of business to decrease whatever the lighting is particular. By fifty percent.
No, yeah.
So we'd like to see that done, and that'll be one of the notes and we have.
That'll be.
We're not huge fans of wall packs, so the ones we chose are dark sky.
Good, that's our code.
Very wild.
Okay, and we'd just like to see it. We do a network on the gas stations.
Oh my god.
It looks like a landing.
You ever have a block vacation?
Glad we agree on that.
Yeah, and we also need to, um, make a motion to refer this, this to a variety that.
Sure, good idea.
Unfortunately, it's not ready to go to orange, uh, also, orange, also, you know, planning board, because we don't have the final map. We don't know it.
We can send it to DOT.
But we can refer to D, well, they sent it to DOT, we have them sponsored, that's fine.
Yep.
We need to send to the fire department.
Well, we need to send it to DOT, we need to ask John Riley about the signs.
Okay, so it needs to go DOT for that, it needs to go to fire department.
Yeah.
That's just.
You already have it at Ulster County, uh, Department of Health, so we don't need that.
Right.
Um, we're not ready to send it to Ulster County Planning yet because we don't have the finalized map. Rick, what are we missing?
Uh, that's it.
Okay.
I don't think.
And also the, the, uh, the engineer consultant.
So if the client decides to just, just special events, put them aside, come back later if that's what they're choosing.
Uh huh.
Um, these are the topics that we're going to proceed with for the next meeting and hopefully we can get a public hearing.
Yes.
That's the next meeting, we should be able.
And we'll, and we'll be able to give you the waiver or discuss the waiver for your parking.
That'd be great, and you try to be realistic, should all of those calculations and, you know, of course, prepare for the work.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I saw attorney said we also proceed at that time, when we got this, and then we can proceed.
Now, have you guys sent it to Shippo?
We did, could check with Shippo, no issues.
You got a letter back?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Yeah, it was submitted.
Great.
This is not, this is not considered a final map, we sent it counting because DOT has to look at the signs on the fence, or is that?
DOT lighting, we haven't approved lighting, and we haven't approved the park.
Yeah. We have all that on our, on our seven drawings, so if there's anything, when you get to review it.
Sure.
It's obviously you can.
Uh huh.
Uh, please let us know if we can advise.
Right, so the house across the street is a historic location, I believe it's the Tom Ford House, Patrick, maybe.
Is that the one that's listed as storage?
Tom Quick.
Tom Quick, thank you.
That's can't be a little.
Nope, it's the, the house across the street that's behind the gate.
Yeah.
Um, when you sent it to Shippo, did they just mention that that was the, the historic site or no, did they look at neighboring sites?
They looked at neighboring sites.
Yeah, okay, that's surprising.
Yeah, and, uh, just, just so you know, it's actually like five hundred, five hundred and two feet outside of the center of the property.
That's why, okay.
So, so although it does show up on the map, um, their concern was more the riverbed and indigenous artifacts, but they said it was cleared for that. And the house was out of the five hundred feet.
Great, thank you for that, because I remember, uh, the number is five hundred feet, that's, that's great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
I feel good about that. We will, the code enforcement officer will reach out to the applicant and myself within the next couple of days, depending on weather and how that works. Once we have that decision, we will air, we will not do anything until we hear from you guys on how you're proceeding. Moving forward with commercial events, not moving forward with commercial events. We will, while that is happening, we will on the backside be working in tandem with you to get fire, New York State Department of Transportation and CPL engineer on the lighting involved. So that we can get that ball rolling too. So we will. Yes, and by, okay. Uh, Mr. Gordon.
I just want to be clear on the best thing. In terms of senior, the standard, whether or not you combine them, it's not whether you've got an application. The standard is what you plan. So if you were to make, let's say, a tactical decision, we want to move forward now, we want, we want this to go forward. I mean, you can obviously not, you guys are gonna do what you're gonna do. From, from, from our position, we want to know what your plan is and if, and I do not want you to make the tactical decision, you still have that plan just for four months. That, that, that's not a good thing. You either have a plan to do events in which case you want to hear about it, whether or not you do the application. Or you don't have a plan, you abandon the plan.
Right.
What happens in a year, what happens in a year, but you understand what I'm saying.
Oh, yeah.
And we will need something in writing regardless of which way you travel, just throw us on someone.
Yeah, that's what your plan is. And be honest, and you're then they're great, if you're not, then.
Dave, that's because of.
Because senior requires the entire plan to go through the environment. Even if they haven't applied for, suppose you're doing a rezoning and you're gonna do a site plan for a phase two and you don't have the exact thing and you haven't applied for the site plan to get. We need to know your plan as much as it is. If you're gonna, if you're gonna do five, fifty thousand square feet of commercial space here, fifty condos there, that's your plan, even if you don't have a site plan nailed down yet. We need to know the plan because we can't do a secret review on the bits and pieces. So it's their plan, great. If it's not their plan, great. That's, that's, that's what we're gonna look at and that's what I want you to think.
Because if you do start holding events for months, it'd be way outside the environmental.
Absolutely.
Yeah. You either abandon the plan, which you have now, or continue with the plan, but whether or not there's a site. Whether or not there's an application, but it's.
We'll talk to Eva and see which way they want to go.
Okay, thank you, guys. Appreciate you coming in the weather.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eva, Chris, appreciate it.
But it's a mark, it gets tricky.
Okay, it's. Does the board need to take a break? You feel good? You want to keep going? Okay, let's keep going. Thanks, guys. Appreciate it again.
By the way, thanks to Al on the.
Thanks. That's our goal. We're trying. Okay, Stonehouse, Nadine, Alwenda, you guys have, ready? So, um, we, first of all, thank you for coming. Weather, obviously, we appreciate it. We've had so many cancellations and changes and moves that we, we appreciate you guys sticking around with us. So we have the review from Mr. Church. We have your guys' submittal. I'll have your requests. I think maybe we'll give you guys a couple of minutes, if you want, Nadine, five, six minutes to just review sort of where we're at and then what we'll do is we'll take the opportunity to discuss what you mentioned. We'll air to Mr. Church to go over those individual line items and then we'll sort of circle back. Does that sound good? Okay, Nadine, it's all yours.
So, um, we did receive different comments in different times, like Mark just said, we were here in December. We did receive a memo from the planning board on December twelfth with the comments and things that we discussed before. So, um, we obviously have tried to address those comments. Um, post those comments. We've got some verbal comments um, about concerns of the code enforcement office. On March first, we did receive some comments from the code enforcement office. And then just last week, we did receive the plan of comments we gave.
Sure. Yes.
So one of the common items here, there's a couple of common items that came up with everyone's concern. Um, from the beginning was ADA accessibility, um, building code issues and Department of Health requirements. So.
Are you gonna lead with your best foot forward about your proposal? Okay, go ahead. We're waiting, taking the air out of the room.
Yeah, well, so, so something that will address all of these items is the discussion of the restrooms. And I know, you know, the part of the planning board concerns about having to fortify something like this. So apparently, according to building code, um, outdoor seating for a use, whether it's seasonal or not, is considered part of the permanent use and does require restroom facilities. So there is an issue on this site, as you know, the horizontal and vertical separation from Grand South and T V located to the existing restrooms. So what we're proposing is to provide a permanent restroom facilities that are plumbed, that's ADA accessible at the elevated site near the outdoor seating.
So on that topic, and I didn't want to interrupt, but I'm going to, just to clarify to the board, in the same spot where they proposed the temporary porta potties, they are now proposing two bathrooms, one that is ADA, both that have potable water, both that are.
Right.
And it'll have its own septic system.
So it will come through the existing water system and, and we're gonna break that into two, two different things. The existing water system has some filtration to treat certain things, plus it has disinfection. So all the water will go through their existing.
Treatment facility.
Filtration, but it will have its own disinfection up at the.
And these will be permanent structures with its own septic and utilizing existing water.
Right, and it'll have its own treatment system.
Thank you.
And hot water, because we have to have hot and cold water. So, um, so we've been working on this layout, we've been working on the design. Um, we've got a, a concept together that we submitted just for this meeting.
Sorry, did you have any maps?
No, you know, we did not submit the maps because the maps that we submitted were in time for the February meeting. We submitted a set of plans on January twenty-seven thirty.
For the February.
So, well, since discussion, we are developing these plans. So we wanted to submit what our thoughts were on this and move forward with that because, um, obviously it will require Health Department approval for the design. Um, once the design is permitted by the Health Department, um, then we will be seeking that, obviously, that, that may be a condition of the planning board.
And I'd like to also know.
Need that, then we'll go, the CEO will need that. No, well, the building permit will need that, but the CEO will be contingent on installation, obviously, and inspection. But you guys will need the actual permit to construct these things for the Health Department here.
Okay, um, so the assumption is, and you're gonna have media.
Yes, so you know, I did develop, but then like working on it so that we can get it in in the dance of the next meeting. And you can see that we're, we're showing the waterline location, the septic location. We're extending what we have here as ADA to the, to the seating area. We're continuing that ADA to the restroom area. This is all. So really what we're looking at is the surface, like the, the crushed stone surface with the path. Um, the rest of the area, if it's not part of the driveway or the parking area or that seating area, it's gonna be grass. So technically, it is all, the whole thing that they need, but we are showing one designated path that is definitely ADA.
And Nadine, I wanna, I just want to preempt. You have been working really hard on this. We appreciate that because this has been something that we've been going back and forth and there's been some interruption on ours, in our house. Um, and we appreciate the back and forth, especially the code enforcement officer had the opportunity to review our previous chair's questions. And then we had the opportunity to discuss those as a group. Um, so thank you for that. And then thank you, you continue to evolve this, so this is, this is good. We have, we have a couple of, we have a couple of questions.
Definitely. There are definitely more items that were part of either your initial, which we want to talk about for sure, and that we already know that you guys wanted more information on. Um, and of course, from Mr. Church and from the CEO. So we do have more information to present, but you have a, a question specific to the restroom?
It affects ADA, we're, we're on a topic. We don't, we haven't dealt with ADA a lot, and therefore we had it's been provided as a paved surface, and that's where my question's going. Um, the size of it, and you may, you may already have it, so the size of it under the New York State, New York State is more stringent than the Fed, Fed's, I never read somewhere. So what's the size of it? Does it need to be the maximum size, which would be car and van accessible? Which then makes it eight feet, an eight feet, eight for the for the car or the, the eight feet for the roadie. And does it need to be paved, question mark? And whatever the code says, it would, I don't have an opinion one way or the other, whether it does or not.
I can definitely, I'll clarify that. So the parking does need to be, it needs to be a bihumanist area. Parking will need that.
The actual parking and loading area.
Handicap accessible.
Isle next to park. That will undo. That is a bihumanist per, a surface, so you know, oil or chip, whatever that is. Right, that is my go. But the path only it needs to be, and I have the language right on there, as far as unobstructed.
I believe, Nadine, you put a, a chart that shows what that grade looks like, is that correct? Maybe on the previous submission?
There, there is the contours on here.
Okay, continue with the.
So the path just needs to be a three foot wide, stable, firm, unobstructed, nearly level route from parking to whatever the facility is. It is, yes. And compacted crushed stone or grass is part of the DA. I know. No, no, no.
I know you're not gonna stop, so it's.
Yeah, so then also on the ADA, we're, we're gonna park here in a number of spaces. And that there is a chart for parking area. So up to, um. So the original area.
Does require.
Does, does require two. So, uh, so we have to list it on there. Um, so the additional, we add this additional thing for parking. Um, that was required because it isn't only parking space, it would require one space. In all of the spaces, one is required to be van accessible. So we do show one by the initial restaurant to be the van that that's spot, with the eight foot wide space and the eight foot wide accessible area. That's indicated on the plan. So this, um.
So you're combining the parking up and down and saying.
Well, they have to because overall we have more than
The required.
Fifty. So once you get to fifty spaces, you need three. So there is another part of accessible code that allows if there's separate areas and, and more than one um, accessible access, that they can be split into different parking areas. As long as the one is, you know, the shortest distance to that other space. So.
Would make sense.
Which they are proposing.
Right, because that, that, that addresses.
That area.
Accessing the area that's being built to the outdoor seating. Right, and the applications for the outdoor seating, right, the additional parking point is for the outdoor seating.
In position we need to.
Three overall. Either way, right.
So Rick, based on code. Because code one through twenty, what is it, five?
Twenty-four.
Anything more than twenty-five.
Oh, okay.
Where there's, there's twenty-eight on the lower side, so they do need to.
Yeah.
So on the topic of, okay, the code enforcement officer based on fire code, section ten twenty-eight of exit discharge.
This, we're talking the existing use.
That is correct.
Building. Okay. No, 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 I'm just saying, we're.
Yep, we're migrating, yes, yes. Are you, unless you have more on the top? Nope, you go ahead. No, that's okay. I jumped the gun.
No, that's fine. We can, we can talk about that.
Oh, you have some things on the top? Okay, great.
Just.
Let's stay on the top.
All right, so you know, I'd like to go through the whole plan on top because so we added a lot of information
Okay.
From our original meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, so, so in the original meeting, these are the, the topics that came up. There's, um, you know, walkways, what the health, we just touched on.
Yep.
Topography, the determination of a sample road, rendering of the seating, ADA. Altration to pavement markings is one, the sound and noise study, special event, and submission to park format. So with regard to walkable access, access signage, we've added on the plan. This was the plan that submitted, we submitted hard copies and.
It's in this.
Not that. That was just a sketch to show the.
Hang on, I want to make sure I got the right voting here, but we're all looking at the same thing. That was sent on.
Uh, January thirtieth. Yeah. We sent it on the twenty-seventh, but then I realized some of the lines.
January thirtieth. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so to address those comments, you know, we talked about pedestrian access. We provide a twenty foot wide, um, let's call it a driveway, roadway, whatever you want to call it, twenty foot wide lower parking lot to the other parking lot. Um, we're showing a three foot pedestrian walkway. Up to the dining is shown here and it is crushed stone, ADA accessible route. We've also added at the planning board's request, three foot wide, um, walking path alongside the driveway from the existing parking lot up to, to the dining area. So we've added those paths. We've added bothered lighting along the paths. We've added signage to say that there's outdoor dining and parking this way. A new vehicle access of this uh, paved little area, because that was a concern. Then we have more sign here to direct for outdoor dining and parking and for the pedestrian walkway. So this sign is basically on the edge here, so it defines a little bit more where the walkway is. Um, to continue with the signage, once you're up in the new parking lot, there's a sign as you're facing this direction to show exit to Route two oh nine this way. And then there's a sign here that says, um, not an exit, do not enter. And we're proposing to put up a barrier here of a, a road chain, uh, connotation. So, so this is a twenty foot gravel way into a gravel parking lot with the ADA being paved. So these spaces are laid out at ten foot wide, twenty feet deep. With a twenty-five foot lane in between, which means the current.
The parking spaces, they want ten by ten, nine by ten?
They're ten feet wide and twenty feet deep. Yeah, yeah. And that's, that meets the code requirement. Um, also, um.
My size spots.
Yeah, you know, that's the code.
I have, I have two questions. So far, I think one is. Uh, and then they're jumping the gun, but is propane tanks close to that driveway coming down?
The propane tanks are, are down in this location off of the existing.
And I think they need a follower or something, a couple of followers to make sure somebody doesn't drive into that out of control, cause then the driveway drives once up trying to.
Right, so as some of you remember, uh, the Dollar General had a car that lost control and.
We have giant huge rocks that they can't go through and the propane tanks are down.
Huge, okay, good.
So we'll label, we'll label this that, you know, some sort of protection will be in this.
And that's satisfactory.
Do you think it's prudent not to pave this?
No, it doesn't require paving. It's only between ten and twelve percent. It is not that steep. It's below the code requirement is. You can have. And it's a very short distance. Besides, it's not like it's, you know, six hundred feet long and it's fifteen percent and, yeah.
That's your.
You know, and if, if it is, it's basically all considered impermeable for the zoning calculations. So if it has to be paved in the future, there's really nothing that is around that. Yeah. So, um, all right, let me just write that down.
And Nadine, we can follow up with your little letter that we do.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so that was that. So one of the other things was, um, the geography. The site was surveyed, um, for, for this specific area where the changes are going to be made. So this area has one foot contours through it and then it was supplemented. And then it was supplemented in this location and so, so two foot contours from the GIA. So that was added.
Thank you.
San Hill Road, definitely a private road. You know, it's private road. We got the letter from highway department into private road.
I'd like to just ask on that, and this, I can ask you guys, because you guys haven't said much tonight. What are your utilization of San Hill Road currently? And then what do you see it to be after this expansion? You have a, do you have a? Okay.
So I mean, that, that's their access.
Okay.
Only one house after us, they access it.
Okay.
Um, and we've used it for a forty-five.
For a forty-five, okay.
Who owns the road?
Essentially, we do.
It is a private road.
So.
So I spoke, I'll answer that, Patrick. I spoke to our highway superintendent. And he said that the road is public up into the first driveway.
Right.
After the first driveway, each individual lot owner has a right of way of use. To use that. So for instance, uh, this property in their deed shows that they have a right of way to use that. Yep. So, so the tenant.
And to clarify, the commercial use is being, you know, from directly from two oh nine up to the site. Currently, there is no access to this field other than from San Hill Road.
Right.
So this new driveway provides access directly off of two oh nine to this parking lot to this area.
The barrier that you mentioned putting up is to ensure, I mean, you guys are still going to use it to access the property.
Yes.
But it's to make sure that, um, restaurateurs.
Do not exit.
Patrons are directed to go the other way.
And then can you give us a detail? You said that was a rope or a chain?
Yeah, yeah. So we, we have a visual, uh, removable barrier such as a rope or chain shall be provided across the existing driveway. And post, uh, supports as needed.
Because you don't want, I'm sure you would agree, you don't want additional traffic because you have to maintain that road. So you don't want it to be overutilized.
Yeah. So, uh, it was also requested for rendering of the seating area. Now, obviously this is approximate. This is the gravel area that's, that is this in this location now. Uh, this is one configuration of tables that have, has been there, not there, they're, they're not set. Right. So, so we did provide the rendering.
People are going to have there and do you have sufficient, uh?
Right. So the proposal is forty-five. And, um, so based on, um, the number, uh, we need to provide two. Because you. Well. It's a, it's a long calculation. Like either have to provide one. Male, one female or two, uh, open, like you just, you have to provide two. We told them this too. That's not supposed to be one.
That's from the board of health.
Uh, it's part of the building code actually. Yeah, yeah.
So why don't we stop there and see if any of the board members have any questions about up top?
We didn't cover the, I think you were going there, the special events. You're not doing special.
We did cover that. We are not doing special events.
Thank you.
In our response.
Checkbox.
Definitely no special events.
Checkbox.
And really, you know, when we say people will call for reservations, so there may be a large party, um, you know.
Running a restaurant.
Your office has had our Christmas party there, you know, but it's not.
That's running a restaurant.
So, yeah, that's part of running a restaurant.
So on that topic, is there any other questions about the, the top? I don't have any.
Okay. So before we get off this, let's just say that, that, um, music. That was part of the conversation. There was, uh, the sound study.
We have that in the folder.
And it was shown that, you know, when they did their testing, the, the music would not be more than whatever the ten decibels are over ambient. So you have that on file.
Your sound study was good. Thank you.
Being on the meeting and you didn't use the patch.
The studies, so I can't tell you. You have to read. That's all I read. So, um.
It's sufficient to for.
You don't use that. Exactly. Cause that gives you more sound all the time, I suppose.
I, and I, right now, so I can TV and if a large truck goes by, I can't hear my TV. So I'm just saying. I'm just saying, it's noisy. I'm just saying, this is right onto a mine. So it, it is, um. So, um. I, I just want to look. Up top of the ADA compliance, uh, you know, as far as the, the. Handicap spaces providing up there.
Then we'll have a condition, obviously, for Olson County Department of law for approval for septic and puddle water, which.
Yeah.
Your bear, you want to put that.
I did, yeah, five, uh, parts. Yep, um, so, yeah, I think, I think it really kind of. That, um, Mr. Church did have the question about the mobile home. CEO did absolutely answer that question that that, um, uh. Compliance with the town ordinance.
Sustained rental.
Yeah. So, so that's good to go.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, so, so I think the. They submitted all the, kind of the. The, the, yeah, all the strike and. If, if you need to.
It's our practice. So if you're ready for that, to, uh, board any conversation.
No.
You heard.
Yeah.
We're trying to get everybody on, when, when you turn the lights off.
Their use is right here to, um, yeah, after five hours, air light would be set on, uh, dusk in, uh. Dusk and dawn time set to eleven PM with motion sensor being optional. And same thing can be, um, with the public lights.
Okay. So we'll put that on our list to send for lighting. Thank you.
Um, yes, so don't forget to send the lighting question.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So I think the only other outstanding thing would be existing parkings, which I know those. Um, that the board definitely can address anything that is a hazard at this point. So it was presented to us that, um, there was an issue with access to the front door. The way the parking was, that it was blocking the front door for, for the egress. And that the parking was over the invisible property line.
Invisible right of way.
The invisible line, you know, not where the curving is or whatever. But so.
So everybody's on the same page. Real quick. This is for the, uh, parking in front of the restaurant.
Yeah.
Where they are currently parked in the invisible New York State right of way. And they are proposing, they have a new plan.
That door. Is that an accessible door outside of in or is it just a panic door?
Inside out.
No, it's, it, it can be. It, everybody.
No, it's inside out only. Yes.
It's mercy.
Means of egress.
Okay.
Okay.
So, um, so.
So isn't Jerry's comment, he's concerned with that emergency?
Yeah. So I, I want Nadine to finish and then I'm going to address that.
So, okay. So this plan shows a reduction in that parking out front to five four and eight foot. No parking zone in front of that door, extending from that door to the end of, of the, the. Space that's out there. Plus we've, um, downsized that parking, proposing two, um. Compact car spaces on the other side of the door and, um, making the, the other space eight foot wide. So it's eight foot wide space and then eight foot wide travel way. So in, um, let me get my paperwork.
In Jerry's letter, he refers to X number of square feet of.
And I'm going to get there on the fire. Um, let, let's let Nadine finish and then I'm going to get there with Jerry's comment.
Fire, like, try to be organized. Let's just keep going. So when you read the building of fire code, there's a couple of different, um. Components of, of an egress. There's, you know, the actual exit door. And then there's the, the discharge, which is the means of egress system between the termination of the exit. Which is the door. And the public way. So there are some calculations on that. And I'm just going to read this part of the code. The capacity in eight, in inches of means of components other than stairways. So this is not a stair. If I multiply the occupant load served by such component. By a means of ingress capacity factor of point two inches per occupant. So there's eighty-five occupants as far as I could tell in the building, between seventy-five seats and up to ten employees. So when you multiply that by point two. But, uh, there's other parts of the code that says that.
But what does that mean seventeen inches?
Need seven.
Eight. I mean seventeen inches up that way. But no, but there, there's other parts of the code that refer to, um. Minimum width shall be not less than forty-four inches. And that's just under forty. So, so the egress discharge, which is this here. This part here in front of the door.
Nadine, do you mind coming up here and showing us TV so we can all see? Do you mind?
That has to be a minimum of forty-four inches. And we are performing an eight foot strip.
And where are the compact spots that you're proposing on that?
Um, so here's the, the front entrance.
This is the exit only from interior out to.
So this is from. From this entrance out here. This is. The path to the public way, which is either the road or this part of the parking lot.
Yep.
We're providing this eight foot trip all the way past the parking space to this area. Clear, unobstructed, eight foot. More than forty-four inches. This is the area that we're providing or posing, uh, compact car spaces. So that we don't go over, this is the highway bounds line right here, all the way across. So these will not enclose on the highway bounds. This is all proposed, but was due by.
You, you're proposing two there and what's, is there a third one you're proposing, a compact space? No, two compact and one ADA.
That's the idea out the front of the dollar.
We're just talking about the front. Two, two compact and the ADA is the spot on the other side of the eight foot opening that she is providing.
Well, how's the ADA person, the person who farts here as an ADA, going to get in front of a door where it doesn't provide? Out to in access. You don't.
This is.
It's a walk to go around.
Right. There's a spot on the right side of the existing entrance on the side and a spot in the front.
So where it says, where it says front entrance, it does say front entrance.
Okay.
Well, that's true.
And this is the main entrance and this is through here. Um, because it, it is an old parking area. The slope varies between about one percent to up to three in this area. But it is still considered acceptable because we're not making any changes. To this building. We're just trying to, at this point.
But why, if that's an exit only in the front, why are you putting an ADA there? They have to walk around to the other entrance. Why don't you?
It's still a clear path at suitable grade from here. We'll have to decorate this aisle next to the space.
And is it going to be paved? I don't.
It is already, it is.
This is all just.
The reason that's done is because this.
Flyway.
Hang, hang on, hang on. No reason.
I want to make sure you change my question back.
Hang on a second, Rick. Rick, I'll hang on a second, please. The reason that she's proposing that is because that parking spot has the, has the best grade. So it meets the current ADA requirement. So although it's only ten steps away to the main entrance. That the reason that that parking spot that they're proposing there is because that's the best grade. If you were to be closer towards the other current ADA spot, it would be outside of the grade, which is exceeding, Nadine, did you say three percent?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
So this.
Does that, does that answer? Okay.
This is the here that comes all the way around and come back up. This is all asphalt. This is all paved here. Those spaces are gravel and then there's another, uh, what's in the reach?
Yeah.
This is all paved here, right up to the access, up to the grass strip. And there's a little path around the building.
Thank you.
Existing.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah.
So what's Jerry's? Okay, so.
Problem with that or issue with that.
Oh, I want Nadine to finish and then I'll go over what the.
So we, so we label on here that the portion of the existing parking area could be restripped. So that it becomes in accordance with the ADA requirements, eliminates the parking beyond the highway bounds. And provides the clear mark, unobstructed exit discharge route with eight foot wide. And the appropriate signage would be put to these locations as far as the ADA signs and things like that.
Okay, thank you. So when I met with the code enforcement officer. He referenced section ten twenty-eight and to discharge a fire. Uh, in conversation with both Mr. Gordon and Mr. Church. And I'll let them speak for it. Their review of the code is that potentially it may meet. The current requirement based on exit discharge. The code enforcement officer does not feel that it does. Now, historically, the, the, the planning board would err to the side of the code enforcement officer on what he is requesting or recommending. Did I miss something, Mr. Church? Mr. Gordon, did I miss anything on that topic?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just, you know, I just did a little research on this and I. When you say historically, we would defer, just to be clear, and this is a kind of a rule that's funky and it gets, you, you know, we can all figure out how it's applied. Let's just take a step back for a moment, pretend just for the sake of argument that instead of being a fire issue, suppose it was a zoning. And the code enforcement officer comes up with a zoning ruling that maybe the applicant doesn't like and maybe we don't like. Okay? What's our authority to say, you really messed that up? Can we? Somewhere, somewhere very close to that. Bottom line is, if you don't like the zoning determination of, of CEO, the answer is. Go take it to the ZVA. That's what the ZVA is for, is on board appeals. Um, now, of course, as a practical matter, the, the planning board does make zoning calls at some point, but the more fundamental ones, especially like a use call or something, something fundamental. We can't do, it's got to go up to the ZVA. But of course, we do certain things like interpreting very specific elements of the parking code.
Signs of the parking spot.
Right. Um, now, let's talk about fire code. What I found out was. Uh, in the code, building code, if the, if the, the CEO makes a determination and they don't like it or we don't like it or whatever, there is an appeals process, but it's not through the ZVA. There's, there are actually state offices in the Department of State and there are regulations on this. So which allows the applicant to either, they think it's wrong to do an appeal, just like you would appeal to the CPA. Or if it's arguably right, but they just think it's a bad idea, it's, it doesn't work here, they can apply for variance. To the town. So the bottom line is, in, in a very. To give thumbs up or thumbs down on the, this CEO's call. There's an appeals process. I do not know, I mean, because they said that in, if it was a zoning issue, again, there are certain zoning issues that will, that will interpret because it just comes to us and, you know, like a, a. I don't know if there's any, uh, in the fire code, but I would, I would keep that at arm's length until we know that that's the. We can have our opinion. This is CEO's determination and there is for better or for worse, there's state appeals process for that. And I can send you the, you know, the, the regulations on that. There are, there's both, um, a regional board of appeals for these things, but also there's provisional law. For any office in the Department of State, if, if, if for, for issues that they consider minor, and I don't know whether it's, it's not, you can just go straight to the Department of State. There's some office there. And they just give you the.
So with that information, we're going to leave to you guys to decide how you want to proceed. In purview, and I won't speak for the board, but I'll speak for myself. It's the code. That's the, that's the determination I'm going to go with. Mr. Church, you probably. Now, how you decide to proceed would be two ways. Of just that item that potentially alleviates the problem or the concern. Or two, as Mr. Gordon said, travel the road, the route of potentially observing an appeal or asking for an appeal. Um, we are not parking or fire code experts and I would like to get this to the fire, um, out to the fire, uh, department. In part of our transition, but, and you don't have to answer that now.
I, I have, I.
Sure, of course.
Because, I mean, we, we have the code that you're referring to. And it clearly states the required capacity of egress court shall be determined as specified in this section, blah, 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 which I read before. Um, which shall not be less than forty-four inches. So the section that refers to the, the one zero zero five point one is what I read as far as, you know, the number of seats and the definition. As far as the number of seats and the definition. So if it's, if it's more than forty-four inches, what is, what is the building department saying?
And I will say, I want, and I will answer that. I don't know the answer to that, I can ask them to provide. But I don't believe it's in our best purview to go against what the code enforcement says without him having the opportunity to respond.
You basically need to take that information and bring it to the appeals.
Exactly. You can, if it's the building inspector that, that, that the, that either you're new or giving or the new. New arrangement of the facility is compliant, that's fine. The point is, we're, we're not in a position, we don't set an appeal. On the building inspector's determination, that, that's the point I was making, just like it was his own determination.
Whether we agree with you or not, we don't, I don't have that interest.
We, we wanted to weigh in on also is that, you know, this obviously is a pre-existing use, pre-existing condition. Um those four, four parking spaces would be the line from the front door. Has, has been that condition. This isn't a new use, you know, this use hasn't stopped um operating, it's never left its special use. Um the current owners have been running it for over three years. You know, so, so this fire access issue never came up previously. And, you know, so now with this application, which we're not changing the existing parking at all along the frontage that it comes up. You know, is this even a? Okay.
It's because you brought the application in front of us. Everything that is on, in that area is under review. So what you've done is you've opened a can of lunch.
Uh I, I think you certainly might have some need to add to that.
That's one way to look at it, I, I, I'm trying to differ from you.
That's the vernacular.
Yeah, yeah. There's an application for site plan approval. Um and I, I have to check the code out, but it's very typical that the board has either the authority. Or the obligation to not give the site plan approval if there's an existing violation. And so what we have here is a finding of an existing violation of fire code. And again, I, I could check our code, but it's typically, at least in the worst discretion, and it may actually be meant for it, to not give. An approval until the violation is corrected. And since what we're talking about here isn't just a zoning violation, a fire code violation, at least as written up by the CEO. The answer would be that it is appropriate for us to not give an approval until the situation is corrected. Especially because we're expanding the.
And Nadine, regardless of our opinion.
No, no, I get it.
Okay, so as long as you understand, we might all agree with you.
For the planning board though to request, uh because we are, we have submitted in writing. You know, why we think this meets the requirement. What is, where, what is the minimum requirement that they're saying?
What I would ask for you to do, and this can be on your next little, this will hold up process, I just want you to be, understand where we are currently. Is what I would ask you to do is draft us a memo asking for a determination on why and what that number should be. Because your calculation is coming up at forty-four inches. So, based on our numbers, that's what we would like, that's what we see which meets code.
No, I know, that's not what you, that's what you would do. The applicant needs to go to the building inspector.
This is a zoning question. This is not something the planning board frankly has the authority to weigh on. It, it, it's like a separate, it's like this whole separate part of the town. It starts with the CEO and goes up to the ZVA that handles zoning questions. This is a fire code question, so in that sense, the, the decision-making authority is the, is the built, is the. Up to this, these state, these state department. It's just not for us to make that determination. And in fact, even, even worse. If, if there was no contrary CEO determination, CEO determination, we might be able to get away with it because it's part of site plan approval. But we're looking at a denial, we're looking at a, essentially a, a, a violation. I hear what you're saying, but we're not the court to hear that.
We don't get a response?
Well, if you don't, one thing that has happened to me is that, and this is sort of creative lawyering, whatever it's worth. We've applied to the building inspector, and this happens in controversial cases sometimes. We, we were alleging that the proposal is illegal, he doesn't give us any, hey, I'm part of an intervenor. Um we don't get a response, we call that a constructive denial and then we pick up to the ZVA, let the ZVA sort it out. And so, um, I think if it's as simple as you're saying. I give the building inspector two or three weeks to, to comment and if he doesn't, just go right after the state and say, this guy was wrong before. Um he's not responding now, this is obvious, help us. And there is an expedited, the, the state department, Department of State does have an expedited office, so you don't have to go before the regional board. My guess is that there's somebody sitting up there that can handle it. I can send you, in fact, I did a short memo. So that's, that's the decision-making authority for this, it's just not, it's for the taking, looking at negative from the.
Well, hang on, before we answer that.
Only outstanding item as far as the board is concerned, clarification. On the fire.
Ask it right now, yes.
Up to the, the fire.
Well, we have the propane barrier and the Ulster County Department of Health approval, the CPL engineer lighting review.
I'm just saying on the site plan.
Absolutely, yes, the answer is yes. And also kind of planning board, we're, that's part of circuit.
I can give you the, I can give you the, if you want, I can give you the state regulation citation now for those, those offices up in the, um, in the, in the Department of State. Um the, 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 um. Let's see, is nineteen NYCRR twelve oh five point six. That's the small office where you can go with small matters that don't go to the regional, that's nineteen NYCRR twelve oh five point six. For the, for the bigger, for the regional review boards and the standards that you need to go get that variance or to go before the regional review boards. It's basically nineteen NYCRR twelve oh five point two through twelve oh five point five. So basically, look at part twelve oh five of the states, right, of the states, uh, of the state department of state regulations. And you'll see that there, and especially twelve oh five point six is that office up there, I, I write them a letter.
All right, so we will definitely winch out the code enforcement office.
See, maybe there's an opportunity that the code enforcement office can look at it again and see what.
Have you changed it?
Or the, the other option is potentially you guys wanna talk about it and maybe propose a new plan to avoid the time delay.
Well, since we don't know what size, we can't really.
Understand, the, the code enforcement.
What that is.
And the code enforcement office is recommending, just so you're aware, no parking, zero in the front of the building. Just so you're aware. So that is his recommendation based on his determination.
I propose to get around beneath the two ADA stuff.
Put him somewhere else.
Do you have an alternate spot for the ADA that would be in front of the building?
No, because the, the existing site. Does not have. Grade to do that. Now, we could put ADA up top, nope, that grade is too steep. But that does not, the, the main business obviously is the existing restaurant and existing.
Which needs to have.
For, for the ADA parking, which is basically, uh, they're probably in the building of, you know, since. Pre nineteen ninety-two and whatever, so, um, no, there are.
So I have a recommendation, just, just talking out loud and obviously we wanna have this conversation. In the event you eliminated those four spots out front, which now you have three, the two compact and the one ADA. Your new total parking spaces would be how many? Twenty-five?
Uh twenty-four.
Twenty-four, that would be under the requirement for the additional ADA spot, is that correct?
Um, yes and no. But, but that doesn't, now you're going backwards with zoning and you're making. Pre-existing condition worse by not even having enough for the existing use.
Potentially in the event you added an additional ADA spot up top, I'm just talking out loud. Potentially the code enforcement officer would like to see that. Just talking out loud.
That, it doesn't matter, we still need that for this building, even when the outdoor seating isn't.
Well, currently you only have one spot for ADA, correct?
As far as I know.
There's currently only one handicap spot right now?
I think what Mark is saying is.
If you got rid of those spots.
In the lower part, and right now it is twenty-four, you only need one ADA.
So now you can eliminate this problem and now you have no parking.
If it comes to that, if you wanna go.
Just talking out loud.
I think you have a solution. They gotta go, Jerry, and get him to change his mind. If he won't, then you have, you have to.
You have options.
Well, we will talk to Jerry and find out what.
I'm just giving you an alternative, potentially that satisfies.
What that egress park with is required to be according to Jerry. So that's what we need to determine and then we can make some.
And then you have some options.
Yes. If we eliminate those, will this progress us that we can get to the next level or is this gonna?
No, we're, we're, we're moving it forward tonight. This is minor, this. Oh, he just wants to make sure that this is not gonna hold up on us.
If you can't get approved or anybody to, one way or the other, they won't respond or everybody says Jerry's right. Then you're stuck, what are you gonna do?
I guess my question, why did we just eliminate him?
Level off the two lower ones on the right-hand side and put it there.
There's, there's. Yeah, but, but the thing is, but the thing is, you know, according, according to. Options, we need to know what the interpretation of this fire code is. Primary use, putting it up is not a very convenient spot, access to use for, for reasons that, that might not be necessary. Well, that's what we need to find out, what, we need to find out what the width is that, and where it came from. We're not talking about the ADA, the ADA is fine, we're talking about the. To fire, yeah.
Put the ADA in the other.
If we need to remove four parking spaces from the primary use, we need, we need a good reason.
We understand. So, all right, so this is where we're at right now, okay? We realize the problem, it's not something that our board has any purview over, you're gonna work with the code enforcement officer. The Department of State, the ZVA, whatever route you depend. Potentially even come back to us saying you're not going that route and you're gonna change, that's your decision, which we won't make tonight.
Well, you asked it.
Not substantial.
He's the owner.
He had a very good question, if it was just to say, get rid of all that parking in the front, do I only need one ADA at the spot? For the downstairs, down, the answer is that is yes.
We need to make sure that we're reviewing. If the code enforcement officer or office comes up with, with that is and we can't need it.
So how about we do this? Guys, 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 let's get some. Okay, maybe, we understand. Let's, let's move forward and continue to review the list to make sure that all the other items are satisfactory or need work. And then we can go from there and depending on how we're gonna move forward, does that sound good? So Mr. Church's review. Okay, I'm on page three, everyone. We talked about ADA compliance and to its death, we're moving on. Other notes. Uh continuation outdoor dining, we've moved on. Uh state highway work permit. Um whatever is, whatever is required from the New York State Department of Transportation regarding the right of way. So Mr. Church recommends the department's documentation provided needs clarity as to any new improvements within the New York State road right of way, you're not proposing. What improvements exist or are proposed within New York State right of way need to be clear for the record. If no such improvements are to be made to New York State DOT permit is required, then no DOT permits. Mike Moriello, uh, aspired memo noted above the address New York's DOT compliance, however, the proposed ADA compliant parking space. Has excess between, okay, we've already talked about that, we're moving on, that's up to you guys. County Planning Board referral, we need to send to the planning. Conditioned approval of a part of Department of Health, we've already talked about that, where you need to get that in compliance. Uh regarding ADA, I'm moving forward on ADA. Okay, so, those are the items that our, our planner, who's working for both of us, has provided. What we need to do is to, as a board, not including you guys, we will talk about it, to determine where we are with this next process. What, do we feel we have enough information? Do we feel we need more information? Do we feel that the items that are on hold are determining if we needed to go on? So we're gonna talk for a couple minutes and then we'll get back to you guys, you guys can stay there and figure out what we're gonna do. But we have a couple of things that are right now that are on our list and I'll review them while we have this on our mind. The barrier for the propane, the Ulster County Department of Health approval. Sending to CPL engineer for lighting to review cut sheets and approval of dark sky compliance. We need to send to the Ulster County Planning Board, we need to send to fire. And we need to send to the uh New York State Department of Transportation. No, we do not because it's not changing, sorry. Okay, so we're gonna talk, board, how do we feel where we're at right now?
So. I'm usually the big mouth.
That's okay.
I'll get, I'll get right to the point. I don't think we can set a public hearing until this business with the parking in the front is resolved. Everything else is easily resolvable. We typically would set a public hearing while we're sending it up to Ulster County Planning Board. And if we don't get it back in time, we just hold open a public hearing. But the purpose of a public hearing is that the public has, and we have. Uh a map that's complete entire, in its entirety. And if those spots are in around, if they're in. There's nothing to talk about until we get Jerry change his mind. Or they get over to weigh in. Um so. Um that's where I'm at, everything else is, everything else is great. Um I think everything's good pending the parking and I feel like we can open a public hearing. Pending the parking, if we don't have an answer by next, we can hold the public hearing open.
Okay, Patrick? I think so too. Okay, I agree. So what I'd like to do is, I think, Nadine, I'm gonna air to your assistance here on this. Is I'm gonna ask you to expedite your process to the code enforcement officer in hopes of getting a response by the end of the week. In the event we, we get something to them and we get a response by the end of the week. Um I feel like we can open the public hearing, we can keep it open, determine upon what our responses is. And or if we have changes to the map. We can recirculate to the Ulster County Planning Board in the event we feel like we have to recirculate to them because of due changes. Mr. Church mentioned that our, that this compliance, we're gonna use the word compliance issue for parking on the roadway. It is a compliance issue with the town, but the site plan that you are proposing is perfect, is perfect. So we feel like the site plan portion is ready to go, although we won't open two public hearings because that's not what we're allowed to do. We can open the public hearing, but keep in mind applicants, we might have to keep it open depending upon how fast we get a review from the code enforcement officer. How fast we get a response from the Ulster County Planning Board, fire and all the people we're gonna circulate to. So although we would like to, it sounds like the board would like to move forward with opening it. We would also like to get the process started of circulating these documents so that they have the opportunity to review and get us their explanations or responses. Sure, yes.
David, I don't know whether to cheer. I don't agree with what you say we can do, that the matter of the parking is a town code on, it's not a town code item. It turns out it's a fire code item, we're allowed to review it and it's a fire code issue. And again, our policy is typically with something like this, we're setting it up to be counted. And they're gonna see a map that shows the parking spots on there with. Building inspector says you can't have them there. Now, whether we agree or not, we're gonna be setting it up to Ulster County, they're gonna look at it. Maybe you can say you can't do this, or they may say, yeah, it's fine. Now, further confused. So explain to me how you think that this is ready for a public hearing. Because of that fire code quote-unquote violation.
Uh so just for context, coming in in the middle of this, it was my impression the front was a compliance issue.
Fire code compliance.
Yes. And I won't, I won't quibble, but I don't see anything you've provided me where he's actually come out and said it's not compliant. Because he did do the determination letter months ago, did not mention any.
Seven questions.
In his subsequent seven questions, answers to the seven questions. I'm just saying for the purposes, I'll defer to the attorney here, but your code requires a. I'm just saying for the purposes, I'll defer to the attorney here, but your code requires a determination for the code enforcement officer to make the application complete.
Correct.
That happened.
Months ago.
Months ago. Yes. So that's where I'm comfortable with part of going ahead with the public hearing. The whole point of the public hearing is to see if there's any public comment.
Sure.
So tha- that's the purpose.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, you can get hung up. Um but having come into the middle, my impression were these improvements proposed in front were loosely say that would address compliance issues that have come up.
How about?
If your real proposal is about the back. And the back is what the real.
Sure.
Application is. I don't know. I haven't thought through. It's a more of a legal question of this pre-existing non-conformance issue is. An interesting dynamic in all of this. Um.
What if we open a public hearing subject to the code enforcement officers' response? Would that be sufficient?
How about this?
But hang on, let's. But just to complete.
You're gonna make.
But indeed, just to complete the question, I mean, it's.
We still wanna know.
I was suggest I want right. I was just suggesting one of their options, separate those two issues and schedule a.
I wanna hear what the attorney has to say before.
And schedule a public hearing because the front is about compliance.
It's it is, but it's not. I mean, if if there were no application, it would be a compliance issue whether theoretically issue an O V or something like that, but that's not, this is before us because it's presumably, let's put it this way. If this issue is not ironed out one way or another, whether it's Department of State or whether it's Jerry or whatever, if this stays in non-compliance, we're not gonna give a site plan. Because that's not what we do. And and especially on a fire code issue. So no, I would suggest to you that it is a site plan issue because we're not, if it's non-compliance, it's and that's, I think, where Rick is coming from. It's a fundamental thing for us to have it straightened out, both the non-compliance or whatever this compliance and also the ultimate response, whether we're gonna keep these spots or not.
Sure.
It's a site plan issue for mobile for two reasons therefore. And so that's that's in my view. Now, the other question is, okay, it's a site plan issue. Are we ready for a public hearing? That's not a legal issue because you can open a public hearing when you the question is, how do you guys feel about it? Um if I were sitting on the board, I would probably be more toward Rick's side. I'd wanna see some finality before I open the public hearing because it puts one thing in front of the public as opposed to confusion. But this board, for a variety of other reasons, might wanna move a public hearing to, you know, get it started, move it quicker, get.
As Dave said, because we wanna hear to start a public public.
That's that's the board's policy. It's not a legal thing. So and there's there's different, you know, you guys have different impressions of it and ultimately that decision should be made by the board. That's.
Just to elaborate from a on a little bit on a practical matter, so having reviewed thousands of projects as the county uh in the prior prior life, I do think, well, you got to do two things. Maybe you'd have to get that three thirteen site plan completed, right? Think you you submitted the one for the purpose of that.
For March, the March thirteenth submittal.
Right. So that's what I was gonna say.
Complete that before they could do it, before they could hold a hearing more. And or and I guess your custom is when you do a hearing, you refer to the county. And there's no point in sending it to the county if they're not getting the the details on the three thirteen. Uh the second is you could provide the county two options. You could have a sketch that shows we're gonna take care of the front by removing the spaces. Um and that may be actually useful for them to weigh in, right? Um but I'm not pushing you at all to a decision.
I know you have a comment.
I do. Because um when we make the the arrangements, we take this out tonight. We those things will be submitted to a week in advance of the next meeting.
Okay.
So you will have those plans well in advance of the public hearing.
Okay.
So what the board would motion to is to schedule the public hearing for that meeting based on the.
Receiving the.
Receiving the new plan.
In a timely manner.
And those plans will um address these issues. I mean, providing, which I don't see why not, providing we can have a discussion with the code enforcement officer. Um but our intention is to provide the the plans that we're submitting to the health department, have that submission made to the health department. We have those copies of those applications, add the notification about the guide. Um.
So you would have a completed map.
With by the deadline submission date for the next week.
I ask. So if Jerry. Is convinced that he's correct.
Now, I don't know if it was Jerry, but we're.
Well.
Finger. I mean, it could be.
Code enforcement officer.
No.
Code enforcement officer.
Go off. Doesn't change his mind, you're gonna change the site plan that you're gonna submit.
The applicant has no other option.
Okay.
No, you can you can appeal to the state.
They don't wanna wait that long.
That's.
You know. Really in. Uh expense for them to have an attorney involved and it really.
So you're saying that by the deadline, you would be within compliance of of A, what the code enforcement and your meeting finalizes.
Well, I can't guarantee that. We're gonna have to discussion and find out what the compliance.
So then.
entails.
You've made a motion.
So if you don't have Jerry's.
Blessing.
Blessings are a great word.
Yeah.
And then you're gonna.
The code enforcement officer.
If not express, it requires to be a a a different dimension and we can get what that dimension is required to be. We will make sure that the plan is in compliance with what that dimension is.
So it's important for me, whether I vote yes or no, when we vote on setting the public hearing. And there may be three votes to set it. I'm against setting it until we get this resolved. So that's why I ask real specifically. If Jerry says, yeah, I was wrong, no, I had.
I'm saying that he's saying he's wrong or whatever, but we we just need to know what his interpretation of that is. But I guess ours is a minimum forty-four.
Still believes whatever it is, then you're gonna get rid of those spots and the plans you get to us in two weeks.
I will have to discuss that with the owners, but we will get.
Well, we need an answer on that.
If if the plans are, if the plans aren't in in two weeks.
We're getting rid of the response.
If if we have to meet this forward, we can.
So let's let's just, I wanna reconvene. Um you are going in the next day or two, you're going to meet or attempt.
I'm gonna contact the code enforcement office and that's the best idea.
Okay. So regardless of his response, you are going to provide the town planning here with a new submittal within the two week timeframe. That is either A compliant with what Jerry is recommending and determining.
Which we never got a copy of those optimizations, but I don't know.
Or remove the spots so that it's. Is the answer for that? Yes.
Yes. Okay. The applicant is saying yes.
All right. So call the vote for the public hearing.
Okay.
Based upon.
Sure. So based upon, so I need a motion from someone. So um we need a we need a motion to open the public hearing based on receiving. Uh updated and code compliant. Uh plans to our satisfaction two weeks prior to the next.
Enforcement officers, we will update the plan.
If you don't.
Based on on this thing, but he still has to review that.
How about to the satisfaction of the chair?
And then you could use, it's still subject to compliance.
I know, but so this is what this is where we're at right now. We could move this forward fairly quickly right now if your applicant is in agreeance with that.
Yeah, but I'm just saying you still, we can eliminate the four spaces that you don't may not even have the written, you know, acceptance from the building department in time.
I have.
That's what I'm saying.
I know that we have approval because it meets fire code. According to the code enforcement office, it meets fire code if those spots are removed. That is their mindset right now. So as a backup plan, if you don't get an answer from Jerry satisfied with this answer, you can still remove those plans and now we can still have. If that's acceptable to the board. It sounds like it is.
That's. Right.
Okay, so I have a motion.
I'd like to hear.
I don't know how many more times I can say.
You're either gonna get your C P O to say, I was wrong. Here we go. Or you're gonna.
Yeah. So.
So there's a motion on.
I have a motion and a second. I want because Mr. Church had a good point about the Ulster County Plan.
I would just. To deem it complete and open a hearing.
Yeah, or send it to the.
Yes. To the county planning board. It will only be once a month and it's the first Wednesday of the month. So if you don't do.
We need to get it to.
You're effectively doing two months later if you don't do it this right.
Okay. So we will, we will send also send it to the Ulster County Public uh Planning Board. We will send it to Fire. We will send it to our involved agencies. Uh I believe that's it. Is that correct?
Uh that's it. You have to do that. You gotta wait the two weeks though.
We have to wait till we receive it. Yes. Okay.
Well, now what Mr. Church is saying, you can send this one to the Ulster County Planning Board. Because they're they're gonna be redoing, they'll be reviewing the addition and the new things. They're not looking at the compliance. So if something changes.
No, that's not.
It's the opposite.
See, I what I was proposing is that you you submit the new package two weeks prior to his, the chairman's satisfaction. And if he's satisfied, and the hearing can be scheduled and can be referred in county way.
Right. We'll do it at the same.
So you can send it out immediately.
Exactly. But I don't wanna send this one. We wanna send the new one so that we only have to do it once. Otherwise, you're gonna have a timing issue.
The meeting is two weeks or whenever you.
County has a two week.
The county, right, which will be in compliance.
So I wanna make sure.
What's county is.
County meets county.
Oh, we're for.
In Ulster County, they go to the planning board and vote on these.
Right.
Strangest thing in.
Well, what's deadline for the, what's the deadline?
I think it's a two weeks prior to the meeting. That's now. No, it would be the first Wednesday of.
Two weeks prior to the first Wednesday.
Of April.
Or we would have it of April.
Right. So two weeks prior, that what whatever that Wednesday is supposed to support, but I have two weeks prior to that. It's like two days.
Yeah. So I mean, you there.
That's why.
They think they're a bit flexible, right? If you're made aware, but I don't.
You know, again, you know, whether whatever's happening with these spaces, whether we accommodate them one way or another way and or eliminate them or whatever, it does not affect the overall application of extending the driveway.
But that Nadine, that's not a vote. We have.
Revise this. There's a motion on the table.
We have a motion. We have a second. We're we're gonna take a vote and we're gonna make we're gonna make a determination.
Well, that's motion to the public hearing.
Motion's for the public hearing because we're going to simultaneously send the updated maps at the same time we receive them to the Ulster County Planning Board. Although it might not be outside of timing, we're gonna send it at the same time.
The dead part of the motion is.
Do we need to revise the motion? I I don't think we do.
I'm just looking at the schedule. We're at the third, we're at the thirteenth. They would need it by the twenty second. If you're strictly applied.
That's uh. That's nine days from now.
Look, we're trying to stop that ten pound, ten pounds of heat market to a five pound bag.
She might, for instance, have an answer tomorrow and then we can have it the next day and we can send it right away. It still needs. And if not, that's that's their.
We get final plans from the applicant.
Yep.
Correct me if I'm wrong, this. Well, we, the motion is to set the public hearing and to get this to Ulster County.
Right.
And what this is, is we need a plan that reflects the accurate map, an accurate and final dealing with these spots. Either they stay with the proper approval from whoever has to approve it or they go. Because we're not going to.
Right. I guess that's not our problem. So what I'm thinking is is.
Well, it is our problem.
Well, no, they're gonna submit the plans to us. What if they submit them tomorrow? It's obviously gonna meet the deadline for the Ulster County planning.
And I wanna make sure what you have looked at. I have no problem with.
Sure.
Suitable to you.
Of course.
But suitable to you, I think, has to be in line of our attorney who's telling us. Either Jerry needs to change his mind.
Or the spots need to go.
The spots need to.
I totally agree. I'm on board with that.
And so let's just vote on that.
Okay. So but what I'm saying is on that same.
It means the Ulster County Planning Board doesn't get to it till April.
That's not our problem.
Right. We have to hold the public hearing open.
That is correct.
We don't, but.
That is correct. So what depending upon when they submit the the maps, whether it's tomorrow or in eleven days. We are going to send it to the Ulster County Planning Board at that time, whether it meets their deadline or not. We're going to send it.
Right.
As long as it's satisfactory to what we just filed. So I have a motion. I have a second. Are we are we good with discussion?
Yeah.
Yeah, I am too. Okay, all in favor?
All right.
Hi. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. So we will await your revised map.
Yes.
We will also wait for when we receive that map to send it to the Ulster County Planning Board. We will send this to Fire tomorrow to get them, get them to weigh in. Um and I think that um we're very good ship. We need to.
Fire CPL for the line.
Fire CPL, we're waiting on Ulster County Department of Health approval and the barrier for. Do we need to type this?
Yes.
Okay, so um. Mr. Church, let's go back to Mr. Church's notes. Mr. Church made a comment uh in his conclusions and recommendations that we uh we type this. Um. Speaker, if concurring the planning board can make the term, application is type two and no further action under secret requirement. Mr. Gordon, can you weigh in on the uh secret?
Yeah, um we had a discussion on this on Friday and I did some, I did, I made a comment then and did some further research over the weekend. This is a very disturbing thing, not because of any diabolical stuff, but um the bottom line is because of the technicalities that are involved, in particular because of the D E C's interpretation of the type two list. I believe this does fall within the parameters of the type two action. I have to say, however, that D E C's interpretation of their own regulation is almost completely at odds with the intent of seeker. What we have here, and again, I'm not in any way criticizing or evaluating the project, I'm just saying as a matter of just fact, is a relatively substantial outdoor series of improvements, including um outdoor seating for a restaurant and outdoor um parking. And the way this regulation was drafted, and I go back on it more than thirty years, the early nineties, when it was actually twenty-four hundred square feet. The concept was if you're extending a a commercial building by less than a certain amount, back then twenty-four hundred square feet, now it's four thousand square feet. We're gonna let that go as a type two. By the way, everybody knows type two means it's completely exempt from secret, right? Um this is, it's not a question of whether you get a neck deck ultimately. Most things we do get a neck deck. This is whether we do any secret review at all. Um. What we have here now is basically the legal version of the tail waking the dog and essentially throwing it in river because you have almost zero internal changes, but very, very substantial external changes. The point we we want to review it. These are outdoor activities. It can, the lighting can affect the neighbors. If it was in next to a historic area, it could affect the neighbors. If they were using that egress, if they're gonna put um something in, it could be changing traffic patterns. You could be doing all kinds of things because it's outdoors. And because of the way the regulation was originally drafted and then because really what D E C wrote in its handbook. They're just, they focus for whatever reason on what happens inside the building. They're ignoring what happens outside the building, which is in environmental logic, just as fact, it's almost incomprehensible. They could be expanding. Despite the fact that it's written as a four thousand square foot expansion, less or more, they could be expanding that parking lot by an acre. And in fact, they are doing it by a fractional measure, by, let's say, maybe ten thousand square feet or four or something like that. Well, more than four thousand. It doesn't, it's gonna be a type two and I'm just, I'm just at a loss. When when I first saw Mike's letter, Mike Moriello's letter, I thought uh Mike is a good lawyer. He argues and I'm thinking, I I'm gonna, I'm gonna maybe push back on this. I think we need to do at least some form of secret review on this and I did, I, when I first had the conversation with them on Friday, I said, you know, I'm not with them on this. And then I did further research and it's like.
Check for you.
No, it's.
So we we can't say, yeah, but we're gonna do unlisted.
No, the unlisted means that it's not a type two. The way D E C.
But unlisted, the way we've done in the past, I don't think we've ever done the type two.
I'll tell you what, I will send you a secret. Secret handbook?
Not the handbook. I read this section on type two.
And in the regulation or in the secret?
The summary of what is categorized as a type two and this is a type two.
Secret handbook. Well, that.
In the past, what we've done.
I was reading the word facility. Regulation, I was reading word facility broadly enough to catch this so we could do the. But D E C's examples and their explanation.
I guess what I wanna say, David, if the, I thought it would be that we have the ability and this doesn't get pulled up.
Yeah, wouldn't it wouldn't.
But it, the board had the ability. If we felt it wasn't running that whole package, despite of what she said, we could do unlisted.
These are categorical.
Just, no.
In in fact, it's it's not really, it's gonna, it falls on the type two list. It's type two. I just gotta say, D E C.
So if her, I hate to use the, if Herona was told this, they were gonna send their their effluent from their roof out to the.
Yes, yes.
That's a type two.
Unless 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 they do that event, that. My. That event thing is actually a separately applied for special use permit. The problem is here, they're not applying for a special use permit for a parking. Right?
That's in the special use.
But for the. An extension of like.
Yeah, I, it is definitely thank you, but the board is reviewing lighting. They are reviewing noise. They are reviewing.
Right, next town over, it might not be in the code or and 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 that's what I'm saying. That's why you want the velocity control through this process. D E C said something else before.
Termination. You have a law degree. You have the uh. The law degree. I'm a meal.
But they want to be on you. Back in, back in, when secret was first drafted, it was originally contemplated that a lot of the work of secret was gonna be done in E I S. That, you know, if you read the regulations, it's relatively low pressure for E I S. Figure two E I S is to get to the bottom of things.
For E I S is a big thing.
That's. Playworks. There's a very high threshold for E I S. Most planning boards. So the work you guys do is actually, as we. Get the mitigation, the studies at that point, and almost all the. They regulate controls. At least, at least we go to a commercial expansion, so that.
There's no project like this. If somebody had. Lawyer, I said, you can't ask us.
That's what Mike said.
That's what Mike said. But it's in a code, but you're saying since it's.
He said on the D E C type, I said, the type, I said, the.
Our town code says.
Oh, no, no. If it's in your code, then you can. But does your town code say we build different egress or something like that or?
My town code allows us.
Why if it was.
If it don't happen, we do the better.
Yeah, we did share.
So I need, we need a motion. Hang on, hang on. We need a motion.
Type this as a type two. We don't need to lay on paper.
That's correct.
I was so, I was almost composing a letter to D E C in my mind that I guess you guys bond you, right? I was just gonna, just tear them.
We need to fill out any paperwork because usually.
So we need a motion to make deck two. I need a second. Great. All in favor to house with this?
Well.
Okay.
Is that a good thing?
Yes.
All right.
Um, we're gonna do a roll call vote for the secret type two classification. Um, any more discussion? I think we're okay. Okay, Zach?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Uh, Patrick?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So four guesses for a type two secret classification. So that is now done. That's great.
Right.
And um we. We will wait for you. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, guys, thanks so much. Okay, um, so a couple of housekeeping things and other matters.
I would want your job.
Okay, um, thank you, sir. Okay, guys. Um, local law twenty twenty, local law A and other matters. I agree. Local law A in twenty twenty three, you guys were assigned to by Bruce to supply any and all uh notes that you have on the new subdivision law. We only received a couple notes. So what I'd like to do is table that for the next meeting to have everybody have the opportunity. Rick has a bunch that he could submit to here. I have a bunch that I want to submit. Uh, you already, you didn't, you already submitted yours. That is correct. And I don't know if we got. Okay, so we'll have, this gives up the whole board some opportunities. We're gonna table that.
There were a lot, they were kind of minor and it was more stuff.
Oh, I had, I had some major ones.
I have a couple. I have one really big one, but we'll talk about that. Okay, in housekeeping items, I'd like to expedite this meeting quickly because I know we have. Um, housekeeping items, a couple of things. Number one, we need to talk about the Google Drive. Okay, what are our expectations for the secretary for the Google Drive? Some people have voiced their opinion. They don't want it the way it is. They do want it the way it is. It's not right. I don't necessarily have an opinion. Does anybody have an opinion?
I think it's fine.
Okay.
I mentioned to you that we're quick and format change.
I agree.
Change the Google.
Okay.
But everything that we get from the applicant within reason.
Yes.
It's confidential stuff that shouldn't.
Of course.
Between you, but I think we get the applicant. He's to be there.
A little.
Thank you.
And that's.
Yeah, what?
That's, that's my.
Um, there was some uh uh some absence. There was a. It happens. I don't have the opportunity to load it into the Google Drive. Because of Kira, so all I, we had it and it was sitting there, so I couldn't do anything with it.
Okay.
So that partially is nobody's fault.
Because, yeah, because it was really.
I was in the donut hole.
Because it was so like you got, you got. You got the CEO's response.
Yep. And that was it. Yes.
That used to be on kind of our legal record.
Yes.
Absent. I mean, Dave's stuff needs to be there, but I think anything that's confidential and easily identified by the sender, like our attorney, say, this should not be on the Google.
Of course. I will typically, I'll typically send my comments or my opinions uh by email and then it will be up to the town. I mean, you shouldn't be putting on any stuff in place.
Correct.
Generalized.
Attorney client.
Yeah, I, I mean, actually, it is.
Yeah, that's fine. So.
Just a typically.
The Google Drive limited the camera, though, right?
We're gonna, we're gonna work on getting that better. That it's, it's a common problem that we're aware of. We need to.
For access.
We don't grant you access. Do you have?
No, I have access. It's not that the public does.
So that is correct. The public does not have access.
Public sees the application documents that are linked on the website.
That is correct. We talked about that today. Yes.
Yeah.
So there's nothing that is on the web. There's nothing that's on the Google Drive that um anybody can see. It it's available, but for us, it's for uh our purview and the applicant's purview. And then anything that we have that is getting uh submitted to the public for a decision or any items that are linked to applications, that will all be uh hyperlinked on the website by our website administrator. Okay, okay, good on the Google Drive. Next thing, we need to talk about escrow. So work with me a second here. Last year, Rick did a great job of setting an escrow amount for each application based on what application it was. Although that was last year, we have nothing this year. Can we, I would like to make a motion that we utilize last year's escrow dollar amounts for this year, but I need uh more approval.
Just to suggest, I'm okay with that.
And it's in your packet. I provided.
If that's easier in terms of, because I think the town board has to weigh in.
They do. We have to provide them our recommendation.
I think you should up all the amounts by category.
Okay.
Because the experience that I had was the initial amount was never enough. We're always going back. So you might as well just either double it or at your discretion, just say, hey, I gotta raise these things.
So uh why don't we do this? Why don't you make a, why don't you make a motion to give me the ability to uh, let's do this. There's two motions. One, I'll make a motion to carry over twenty twenty two's planning board's escrow twenty twenty three, number one. Number two, if you can give me the uh ability to set a higher escrow depending on the level of intensity for applications, I can take that and set the escrow accord, but I need your vote on that.
What he said, I'll make.
Okay, so I have a motion. Let's do two motions. One, can we carry over twenty twenty two to twenty twenty three?
Yes.
Okay, I have a motion. All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Okay, it was Rick made the motion. Patrick second. The next motion I need is uh if the.
Which Dave, the other Dave can elaborate on it. So like your discussion about type, typing things type two.
Yes.
If you make a positive determination under seeker, there's an automatic trigger that you'll charge an applicant or do it yourself.
Sure.
Charge the applicant your cost up to a certain amount of the project, total project cost.
Right.
For commercial, for commercial.
Right.
So bear in mind that determination under seeker can also trigger your access to.
Sure.
To analytical financing, right?
Of course. So. Um, I need Rick. I just lost my core. Rick, you're killing me here. Hopefully.
Hurry up, Rick.
He's deliberating. You want to come out.
Yeah. I have a couple of housekeeping questions too.
We're, we're getting there soon, I promise. That's okay. I have to go to suspend seat now, so it's like, come on. All good.
It's too bad.
That's, no, we're, we're not on break. We're, we're just inter uh intermission. We'll be fine. Um, I guess I can keep going. Okay, Rick, here we go. Uh, the second motion is I need uh you guys can uh make a motion to authorize the chair to adjust escrow um uh levels accordingly depending upon level of intensity for applications. Motion made by Mark. Second, second by Patrick.
Adjust them for each project or.
Depending on the level of intent, we're gonna use, this is our baseline, but if we have a special use or something, we're gonna go higher.
You say escrow, you need this or that.
That's correct.
You can always.
Correct. Yes. So I need, I have a, do I need a second? I have a second. Wait, hang on. Who's my second is Pat, is Rick. All in favor? Any opposed? All the abstentions? Okay, great. So I will do that. Um, process and workflow. We have been talking with uh our liaison to the planning board, Aaron, in addition to Kira, in addition to myself, and how workflow and process should be uh handled. And we are, and we are reviving that and cleaning it up to be a little bit more efficient. I'm going to report back to you next month with uh how we're going to, how our recommendations are to move forward and this, we go from there. Just wanted to sort of let you know. If you have any process or workflow recommendations, I'm all ears, but at this time, we're sort of working those things out as. Okay. Section on that topic. Code one forty dash nine is the pre-application meeting code. Right now, currently, a board member, one, or not a quorum, two, cannot meet with the application in a pre-application meeting without the boards, in all of the board being present. So what I mean by that is when an application comes in, I am not allowed under code to meet with them and say, you have to do this, 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 this in order to get on the agenda. That is not allowed. What if?
So what we've been doing.
Um, and you know what the code is. I, I don't know what we've been doing, but I know that that's. Dash nine. The, the applicant has the ability to ask for a free, no charge application pre-app meeting in front of the entire board. In the past, it has been done at the end of the agendas because they're not paying. The people who are paying go first, where they can bring us their ideas or their thoughts or their potential sketch plan or initial plan where we can review it. Um, I want to keep it that way because this, this keeps the opinions of me or anyone on the board who would be attending a pre-app meeting, avoiding that process. Although this potentially could create the process to be a little longer, it is our code and I want to stay within those parameters. So just so we have a an understanding, that's where I'm at on that.
So you're just gonna follow the code?
I am.
Okay.
Any concerns with that? Okay, just want to make sure.
Still means you can have a pre-application.
A pre-application meeting, but the, the applicant has to request it and it has to be with the whole board. Yes. The code reads that you have to have the interior board presence for a pre-application. One forty dash.
I don't see that, Mark. I'm sorry.
Says is. It's um, well, read it. It's one forty dash nine B. Upon a zoning permit determination by the CEO of the requirement of a site plan approval, special use permit, subdivision approval, or use of area bearings, an applicant an applicant may request a pre-application conference with the planning board or Z B A as may be applicable. I was just discussing this with my car legal. Um, there's a concept and logic called a inverse or converse and a counter positive. Do you guys kind of hear what I'm talking about?
No.
In this case, you're talking about the inverse or the converse and uh it's not necessarily logically true. It can be read that way, very, very often is, but the point is they have a right to ask for a pre-application conference with the, with the planning board. The question is, as, as the chair put it, whether that means that only the planning board can have a preapplication, them or can a member. And because logically, there's no answer because it's an inverse or I would say it's one. But that's the problem is it's, it's stated positively as something that they can ask for the planning board to do. The question is whether an individual is prohibited, therefore.
I interpret that as it's the planning board. We are the board, not a member of it.
And you're able to. The question is, is any individual therefore prohibited, which would be the converse and so.
So I.
I think they would be for me.
Okay, so I am, I'm, how I interpret it, I am going to leave it that way and not have pre-application meetings unless requested upon by the applicant. Okay, just so you're, I'm, I'm letting you know. Um, we need to also make a determination or a recommendation to the town board on how we want to handle public comments via Zoom. We, as a planning board, and the zoning board has their own rules and the town board has their own rules, whether we would like to allow, but number one, yes, we would like to allow public comment via Zoom. Or number two, no, the planning board does not, is not accepting um uh public comment via Zoom. We, as planning board, need to vote on that. It's a housekeeping topic and the town board has asked us to uh let us know, let them know what our, our answer.
I need a motion to not allow comments to the public.
I'll second that. Okay, I, and any conversation? All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so the planning board will not accept public comment via Zoom. We will make a resolution for that. That was uh Patrick made the motion and Rick second. Okay, all in favor, four people. Those are my housekeeping topics. Back to the agenda. I need a motion to approve the December twenty two, December twenty, December twenty second, twenty twenty two, meeting minutes. Do I have that motion? And second, I have a motion from Rick and a second from Zach. All in favor? Aye, any abstain, uh any no, any abstentions? I also need a motion for the January ninth, twenty twenty three meeting minutes.
Motion.
I have a motion. I have a second from Patrick. All in favor? Aye, any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, great. Finally, I need a uh a motion to cancel the workshop meeting for the twenty seventh of March. There will be multiple people out of town. So I have the motion and second. Patrick second, all in favor?
All right.
Aye. Any opposing, any abstentions? Great. Okay, um, we need a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Okay, I need one more motion. Motion to adjourn. Rick? Rick moved. Patrick second. All in favor?
All right.
Thanks, everyone. I appreciate the hard work. If we could just wait one minute until we get a, caught up on the Zoom and.